Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, November 13th, and welcome to Foxborough's Board of Selectmen meeting. I'll go over the agenda briefly. Starting at 7:00, we have citizens input. At 7:05, we'll give a chairman's update. At 7:10, we have a scheduled public hearing on the tax classification hearing. At 7:40, we have a brief discussion about the national grid situation. At 7:55, we have a request for the town user fee waiver for the 2012 MIA football Super Bowl, held at Gillette Stadium. At 8:15, we're going to go over the special town meeting warrant review. And at 9:15, we're going to enter into executive session for the purpose of negotiations with non-union personnel. And then we have seven or eight action items and a couple of other things that jumped off quickly at the last minute as well. So, Mark, you want to lead us in the pledge?
...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Okay, we'll move into -- thanks, Lorraine. Move into citizens input. Is anyone from the audience that would like to speak on any topic? Seeing none. I have a couple. Some of these are announcements and updates. It seems like we've been meeting every week, and I think we have been meeting every week. But there's been a lot that's been going on in Foxborough. Just a quick note on Veterans Day. I want to give a special thank you to the Veterans Department and the Veterans Committee, the veterans and families that came on Saturday, the volunteers and the scouts, all led by Jack Orthellet, for their hard work for a very special Veterans Day. It was a powerful tribute, and finishing it off with refreshments from the Doolittle Home was very appreciated. So if you were able to get out there, it was a couple hours, well worth it. Thank you for inviting the Board of Selectmen. We enjoyed it. Another quick Veterans Day outreach. Robert Kraft, the Kraft Group and the Massachusetts Rolling Thunder, who marked the first time in history of a professional sports team that left a seat permanently unoccupied in recognition of the many soldiers who are prisoners of war, missing in action. So there's a black seat above the stadium's south end zone that will remain permanently empty and marked by a plaque recognizing the sacrifices of the POW/MIA. It was very well done and very meaningful, and I thank you for this unprecedented step that happened in Foxborough. Quick note about the elections. Often, when things go well, you don't hear anything. When things go bad, we hear a lot of stuff. We didn't hear anything over the elections, but I wanted to say thank you to the town hall staff, and especially Bob Cutler, who spent an extraordinary amount of time. I think he showed up before 5:00 in the morning and was there till well after midnight. And we had a lot of people that came, and it went very smoothly. So again, when you don't hear things, it's not because things aren't happening, but it was very well done. Hurricane Irene, just a quick thanks to -- I keep saying Irene. Sandy. Still have Irene stuck in my head from last year. For the town people, the volunteers, the police, the fire, the Veterans Services. There's too many to name, but there's a lot that happened over the last year from Irene. And again, it was kind of quiet. We were less involved because I think the people that grouped up from last year did an outstanding job. So even though we were -- you know, people probably remember the fact, you know, when they lost electricity and when they got it back. It was a minor inconvenience to some of the other places south of here, New Jersey, New York. But again, thank you, and I think it was a good year to kind of put into practice some of the stuff that we learned from last year, so it is getting better. And on that note, Linda, do you want to mention something about what you're working on?
Sure. Saturday on the Common, it's Operation Sandy from Mass. We'll be up there from 9:00 to 1:00. Truck is going to leave at 1:30, head down to stop in New York and then Tom's River, New Jersey. We're asking people to come up and just bring what you have up to the Common. If you can't, just call Chris. This fly is that went home with the school. And we just, you know, once we realize that we're safe here and our friends down to the south of us still need us, so people have been asking, you know, what can I do except, you know, $10 donation to the Red Cross? So Chris kind of put this together and asked me to help out. Hopefully, we'll have all sorts of things all over the Common to go into a 26-foot truck that's going down. And then if there's still more that won't fit into that truck, we'll probably do another run next weekend, so.
Okay. And from RISAR and the Foxborough Cable Access, it's not a situation where you just clean out your closet and give your old clothes, because I think they've got plenty of that.
No. I mean, if you are going to bring warm coats and things like that, if you can just mark them in the bag somehow, that it's, you know, a women's size, medium, or if it's a child's, you know, 6X or something, just so that, you know, once we're dividing them up, because there are certain families that are looking for certain things. So once we get down there, it'll be easier for those folks that receive our stuff, so.
Perfect.
Any help? And if you want to volunteer to help sort some of the things out, we'll be up there doing that, too, so.
9:01 on Saturday?
9:01, yeah.
Perfect, thanks.
Excuse me. You're not accepting checks or cash? It's gift certificates?
Yeah, we have gift certificates. There's specific stores, because not all the stores are up and ready down there, and some of them we don't have down there. But there's a whole list. If you go onto Operation Sandy from Mass, the Facebook page has the listing there. This fly is everywhere. And but yes, we will accept cash. The driver will be Bill Wang, so it's safe with him. And what we're going to do is just divvy it up between New Jersey and New York, so.
Great, thank you.
Everything's appreciated.
Two quick last items. Town meeting, we have it on December 11th, and there's been, over the last couple of years, discussions about moving it to a Saturday. And we just can't move it to a Saturday because there's social issues and scheduling issues, and it's a town charter issue, so there's big steps to move it. I spoke to Frank Spillane, actually, he's in the back. At some point, we'd like to have him come in and talk to us. He's got some good insights, some things that I didn't even think about, but right after the elections, after the holidays, we'll take a serious look at the pros and cons of moving a town meeting to a Saturday. Big picture, so you get some of the senior citizens and people that are not typically able to stay till midnight on a Monday night, be fresh and early on a Saturday. The flip side, a lot of people that can make the nights can't make the mornings on the weekends with kids and stuff, so I think it's a good discussion to have, and I'll put that, if it's all right with the board, on the agenda right after the holidays. And lastly, I got one notice, and citizens input's not turning into, you know, requests for money and stuff, but there was one notice that I was asked to read that kind of makes sense. Foxborough Midget Football Cheerleaders, they competed over the last couple of weeks, and the last competition was Saturday in Springfield. They made it to the big tournament, and it's in Florida in the beginning of December, I think, December 3rd. So it's a huge feat for them. They all worked hard. That's the good news. The bad news is the airfare and the accommodations on short notice in the holidays. Some of the parents are struggling, so they asked me if I could just kind of do a little reach out. If you want to find more about it, check in with the Foxborough Midget Football. If you want to send a small donation or a large donation, it's Box 479, Foxborough Midget Football, over at the Foxborough Post Office. So that's it for my going on and on. We have a public hearing scheduled, so if we can read that into the record, and then if you guys want to come to the table?
Yes, sir. Right?
Yep.
Oh, no, that's not it. George Bailey.
Short chair. That's why I didn't take it.
The Board of Selectmen of the town of Foxborough will hold a public hearing at the Andrew A. Gallow Jr. Meeting Room, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, November 13th, 2012, at 7:10 p.m., with the Board of Assessors, Chief Assessor, and the Finance Director, to review property valuations and the total values of all property subject to taxation in each of the four classes of real property as defined by law. The Board of Selectmen will vote on the adoption of a residential factor and then determine, within prescribed limits calculated by the Department of Revenue, what percentage of the tax burden is to be borne by each property class. The Board of Assessors, Chief Assessor, and the Finance Director will provide information and data relevant to making these policy decisions, including the fiscal effect of the available alternatives. All interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and will have the right to provide oral and written comments or suggestions. Board of Selectmen, Foxborough, Massachusetts.
Thanks. And before we begin, and we know you, but if you could just introduce yourselves for the people at home?
Tom Buckley, Chairman of the Board of Assessors.
Randy Scollins, Finance Director.
Michael R.C., member.
Robert Hatch, Secretary.
Hannah Simon.
Thank you all.
Great. Thank you. Just wanted to briefly review again a purpose, so it's very clear, not that it wasn't with the notice, but the purpose of the hearing here is to review property valuations of the property classes subject to taxation and to decide whether or not to maintain a split tax rate, eliminate the split, or modify the split. And that would result -- that results in shifting the burden between residential and business classes of property, hence the terminology "classification hearings." The burden has shifted based on the class of property that's taxed. Again, the context of the hearing here is it's required annual touchstone along the way to having the town's tax rate set and ultimately approved by the Department of Revenue. Once the classification decision is made by this board, detailed documentation is forward to the Department of Revenue for final review. And assuming everything is in order, and we've already been told that our end is in order, we're looking to receive a quick approval, you know, hopefully this week, if the board makes a decision this week, which will allow us to mail the third and fourth quarter actual tax bills by the end of December with February 1 and May 1 due dates. As far as how we would like to proceed here is, I know you have quite a bit of material, but as in the past, I was just going to hit the highlights in the executive summary, the first three pages, and then take any questions along the way. Don't feel like you have to hear me, you know, just myself or the three pages. And then the Board of Assessors is going to make a recommendation, and then, of course, we'll take more questions from the board, and it's a public hearing from the audience, and we can talk about it. You go at the board, talk about what decision you might want to make. So flipping to the executive summary, page 1. The fiscal '13 tax levy itself is increasing by 1.85 million, or 5.07 percent. And to break down that increase comprised of three components. 2.3 percent, or $836,000, as allowed by Prop 2.5. It's 2.3 percent because the base includes debt exclusion, and you can't increase debt exclusion, so that's why the math works out to 2.3 percent. 1.34 percent, or $489,000, is an increase in the tax levy related to excluded debt, primarily related to the library renovation project. This is the first year where the debt service, you know, hits full force. It's not the full amount of the first year's library debt service because we've been amortizing, you know, some debt-excluded debt as well. But the net increase to debt-excluded taxes, $489,000. So the total increase on pre-existing property is 3.64 percent, or $1.32 million. And then we've had a relatively good year as far as new growth taxes added to the levy, so that adds another 1.43 percent to this increase in the levy, or $521,000. And just an important point to make, it's -- some folks may not understand that the levy is the levy, that this 1.85 million, or 5 percent increase. A policy change on tax -- a policy decision on tax rate does not change the amount of taxes that are collected. The tax rate policy only determines the taxpayer's share of the burden, you know, how the tax pie is distributed. So just to be clear, whatever decision here doesn't result in revenue to the town. I'm sure the board knows that. We continue to tax to the limits allowed by Prop 2.5 for the 16th consecutive year. However, it's important to note Foxborough has no general overrides built into the levy, whereas 10 out of the area communities have an average additional general override levy capacity of over $4.1 million. As far as values, which is what we're really here to focus on, the FY '13 total taxable property value, relatively flat, and only increased in total by 28 basis points. Average single residential values, including condominiums, increased by 17 basis points. Average commercial and industrial values, the primary segment of the business values, are essentially -- they increased by 16 basis points, are essentially the same as single-family residential. The average single-family property value, including condominiums, increased in FY '13 by $601 to $364,500. The average single-family property value excluding condos decreased in FY '13 by $880 to $375,900. The residential class of property in total, 74.23 percent of all property value, which has been about the average for the prior two years, give or take the remaining 25.77 of property values associated with business classes, commercial, industrial, and personal property. Over the last three years, residential property has increased from a low of 72.8 percent of the total value, or share, to 74.23 percent, down a little bit from last year, which is important, as we'll discuss in a bit. This shift results in the continuing trend of more of the tax burden, if a single rate, falling on residential taxpayers than business taxpayers. However, last year, the Board of Selectmen equalized this trend by splitting the tax rate, which had the effect of maintaining the prior split of the tax burden, the prior split being the reval year of 2010, which is a clean year for the town, revaluation completed, as well as that's when the vast majority of all the new major growth in town from Route 1, Chestnut Green, Foxborough Lodge, major apartment complexes was captured. So that was -- for us, that's our benchmark year. The tax impact to all residential taxpayers in fiscal '13 resulting from this three-year trend in value shifting away from business taxpayers is $797,000, or about $110 on average, an additional tax burden in FY '13 alone, if the town reverted to a single tax rate. But we'll talk more about shifting. As far as the tax rate itself, again, this is the decision that the board makes, so rather than get into multi-scenarios, I just thought here I'd describe two. Assuming no split tax rate, then the tax rate per thousand in assessed value will increase by 7 percent, or 96 cents, for residential classes, and would decrease by 1.1 percent for business classes of property, or 17 basis points. Assuming a single rate, then over the last 10 years, the tax rate would have increased in total by 95 cents from 1374 to 1469. So basically, this would be the whole increase for residential. Assuming the current split was maintained, the residential tax rate would increase by 65 cents, as opposed to 96, to 1438, and business rate would increase by 71 cents to 1557. And we'll come back to rate shortly. As far as the tax bill, assuming a single tax rate, average single-family tax, including condominiums, would increase by 7.17 percent, or $358 to $5,0354. Average single-family tax excluding condos would increase by 6.74 percent, or $359 to $5,053. Over the last 10 years, average residential tax bill would have increased by $1,816, or $182 a year. The average commercial tax would decline under this single rate by 59 basis points, or by $147 to $24,673. The average industrial tax would decline by 1.62 percent, or $155 to $9,447. And the average personal property tax would increase 5.35 percent, or $117 to $2303. The reason why you're seeing a different movement with personal property, a couple of things going on there. One is there's been a pruning of personal property accounts, slightly fewer accounts, but we captured a significant amount of new growth, particularly from two personal property, the biggest two personal property taxpayers in town, Verizon and Mass Electric. So you have what you have going on there is a slightly small number of accounts, but a big increase in the value from two customers, based on, you know, their infrastructure investments, as values set by the state, I believe, Hana. So that's why you're seeing a difference going on with them. Assuming the current split tax rate, the average single-family tax, including condominiums, would increase by 4.91 percent, or $245. The average single-family tax rate excluding condos would increase by 4.49, or $232. And the 10-year average increase would have been $1,703, $170. The average commercial tax would increase, maintain the current split, by 5.36 percent, or $1,331 to $26,151. And the average industrial tax would increase by 4.28, or $411. The average personal property tax would increase by 11.66 percent, or $255. If the -- in FY '13, assuming a single tax rate, the top 12 taxpayers would comprise 16.29 percent, or 6.23 million of the tax levy, that's the top 12. The remaining business taxpayers would comprise 12.33 percent, or 4.7 of the tax levy, so about almost $11 million between all of the business taxpayers. As far as area-community comparisons, the best data that we have is for fiscal '12, but I think it's important to understand, you know, how do we look compared to other towns? And this is some of the most solid data that the Department of Revenue compiles, which is on what they call 101 class, or single-family homes excluding condos. Foxborough's fiscal '12 total valuation of $1.6 billion of single-family property is 15.3 percent less than compared to the average of the 15 area communities that surround us. 10 of the 15 towns had higher total valuations in Foxborough. And that's largely a function of the number of parcels. We have fewer parcels, about 16.3 percent fewer parcels than the area communities. 12 of the 15 towns had a larger amount of single-family parcels. And our average single-family valuation of $377,000 in FY '12 is 35 basis points higher than the average of the 15 area communities, but we're solidly in the middle. Same thing with the average single-family tax bill of $5,0174, is 3.6 percent less than the average. But again, we're -- that still puts us right squarely in the middle with the surrounding towns. Nine of the 15 area communities have adopted a split tax rate, residential being lower than business in fiscal '12. And the factors chosen by these other communities is on page 13, and it was just interesting to note that there was only one other community that has a factor that's a lesser shift to business, and that's North Attleboro, because they just brought it back last year, and they sort of, they're wading back into it, slightly less than us. But every -- all the other eight communities that have it around us have a shift that shifts more to business than Foxborough currently does. But everybody's got their own reasons for doing that. As far as shifting FY '13 tax burden from residential to business, the board has the option, Board of Selectmen has the option annually to maintain the single tax rate or establish a split tax rate. It's a decision that you make every year. Shifts of up to 17.36 percent of the tax burden can be approved by the board. Couple of examples, a small shift of 0.35 percent would reduce the average residential tax bill by $17.58 and increase business tax by 97.45. If we chose a factor that was chosen last year, 2.08 percent shift, which is close, approximates what it was last year, because it changed from year to year, that would shift 108, about $109 away from residential and increase business tax by 571. Last year, what was shifted was $102 away from residential, resulting in a $542 increase on average for business classes. And the increases, you know, go on from there. And I believe the Board of Assessors at this time is prepared to make the recommendation.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Randy. The Board of Assessors, we met last week, and after going over all the information that was submitted to us, we have voted a majority, I mean a --
Inanimate.
Inanimate vote to keep the split tax rate. And what we did vote for was, is last year, as you well know, we came in for the first time in the history of Foxborough and recommended a split. And at the time, we recommended a 2.08 percent split from the tax burden from business to residential. This year, what we have -- what we're going to recommend to you is a smaller split. We're going to recommend a 1.42 percent split, splitting the tax burden, again, from residential to business. And if you want to go to page 4 in the packet, I'll explain to you how we came to that recommendation. So if you look on page 4, and the numbers that you see here, this is if the current split was maintained. So this would be the 2.08 percent if we carried that into today. And if you could see in the residential column there, the average tax would increase 4.91 percent. You go down to commercial, and you have a 5.36 percent increase. Industrial, 4.28 percent increase, and personal property, 11.66 percent increase. So again, page 4 is carrying the 2.8 percent split into today. If you look on page 5, this is if you decided that you wanted to go back to a 1-1 split. And as you look at this, these numbers here, you see the residential goes up 7.17 percent. Commercial drops 0.59 percent. Industrial drops 1.62 percent. And personal property, that still increases, again, 5.35 percent. But Randy explained to you why that number is skewed so high. And then you go to page 6, and this page 6 is the actual 1.42 percent split. So you -- again, we went back, not to reiterate everything, Randy, it's talked about, but you go back to the fiscal year 2010, and again, that was when we did the reval that year. And, you know, everything was -- every property was looked at, every value was looked at, and we, you know, were very comfortable with all the information we had there. And that's when we found that there was a huge disparity between the commercial business values and the residential. And we also found out at that time that, you know, the state had come in prior to that and basically told us that our commercial values were too low, so we had to bring some of those up. But there was a huge disparity there, and that's when we came in and recommended that split. So we figured during our meeting that, you know, to try to keep that burden the same as that what we -- you approved last year was to come down again to that 1.42 percent. And as you look at the numbers here, you see residential debt bill there would go up 5.64 percent. Commercial will go up 3.47 percent. Industrial up 2.4 percent. Personal property will go up 9.65 percent. And again, if you want to go over to page 8, you can see where all those And again, if you want to go over to page eight, you can see where all those numbers kind of come together and they make sense, and you'll see where the tax burden shift So if you look at page eight again, and you look across the columns, and you see the, the percentage totals of the values there, so you have residential from fiscal year twenty-ten, seventy-two point eight, and then you go over to, you know, fiscal year twenty-thirteen, you can see, you know, that the residential is picking up more of the share there. But if you bring it back over all the way to the right there, the one point four two percent shift comes down to, in the middle underneath the shaded bar, you see the tax levy limit, times the one point four two percent, and you see the tax burden shift. This is the actual shift from residential over to commercial-industrial. So if you look right below that, you'll see the average residential tax reduction, seventy-five point three two. That is if we didn't go back to, if we didn't do a split this year. There's a lot of numbers here, I know that. But, you know, that's really how we came to that, all that conclusion. We didn't, again, we voted to keep the split rate again this year, but we looked at, again, just trying to keep the parity with the, the tax burden shift from last year and just carrying that over into this year. So again, so it'd be the one point four two percent that we recommend. Obviously, you can decide whatever you want to do with that aspect of it.
Without using the numbers and percentages, I had a brief discussion with you earlier in the week, on very layman's terms, so people can understand it. What happened last year with respect to the valuations, one going up, one going down, and what you, what the recommendation was last year, what you tried to achieve?
Yeah.
Just so we have some context to last year and then moving into
Sure. Last year again, so last year was a revalue, valuation year. And it, I'm in twenty-ten, sorry. So when we captured all that new information and it was, you know, that was really in-depth. If you, if you understand the revalue, there's a company comes in and looks at every single piece of property throughout the whole town, and they came up with the values that, they came up with. Also, and again, and at that time, we found that if you had carried a one-one split, the commercial values, the commercial-industrial values dropped significantly, as you can imagine. In Foxborough, we use income and expense approach for our commercial and business properties, so it's not just what the building was built for, it's all about, you know, in, in, you know, income and expenses. And as you well know, that, you know, over the last four or five years, the values and, you know, businesses haven't been that great. So all of a sudden now, all those numbers start dropping, well, you know, every time you raise your hand at town meeting and you want to raise money, that's, that number has to be raised, and has to be raised no matter what the values are.
So when the businesses dropped, what happened to the residential?
Residential now has to capture more of that value, so now there was a huge gap there. So that's when we brought it down, we brought the two point oh percent, two point zero eight percent, and it kind of leveled it off a little bit. Obviously, they both went up, but you would have had a huge drop in the commercial-industrial last year. They would have actually got a, a lower increase, and the residential would have got a huge increase.
Okay.
It wa, it was significant. So that's when we came in last year with that split. So again, so now moving forward, as you could see, if you decided that you even wanted to go down back to the one-one split, that's a huge gap again. I think it's just, we're just looking at, feathering it and just keeping that parity the same.
Perhaps a two, a two-step process to get back to that.
That's totally up to the board, yeah. But that's really how we, we looked at it, we, we captured that information.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from your side? Before the board gets into the discussion, if you would, this is a public hearing, and over the last, really the last couple of months, we kept mentioning to people, if you had input, this was coming up, contact the board members. Is there anyone here tonight that wanted to speak on the split rate versus the non-split rate? Seeing none, open up for the board for discussion.
Should we close the public hearing? Nobody wants to speak now, should we leave it open?
If we close the public hearing and we ask more information that's not here, can, I don't think they can give more new information. I'd like to keep it open for a little longer. It just allows us to have a dialogue back and forth. Under discussion?
I'll go first. Assessed values, I'm going to go give a little bit of a history lesson, not to you, but a few other people, before I say. Back when I moved to Foxborough, going on sixteen and a half, seventeen years ago, assessed values of property were two-thirds of what the value of the property was in town, a residential home. So the house is worth six hundred thousand dollars in the retail market, assessed value was somewhere around four hundred thousand by the taxation, for taxation. Now, it's reversed itself, and a home that is assessed for four hundred and five thousand now appraised at three hundred and sixty-four thousand, it's taken a huge lopsided on that. I'm sure everybody here knows how much your property value's dropped. It's close to thirty percent in the town of Foxborough, on average. A lot of people can't even take advantage of the refi to the lower interest rates because their values are so assessed low and they bought at a higher market, so they can't even take advantage of a lower three and a half percent rate, some of it's down to three and a quarter, wherever. So you have to basically go back into PMI because you've lost your, you know, less than twenty percent of the value you don't have to yourself, you know what I'm saying? So how many people filed for abatements, is probably a question for you, Randy, this year for their home residences in the town of Foxborough?
They can't file until they actually get an actual tax bill because the values are just set, but maybe last year ever since, Hana, how many, how many abatements were filed last year?
I forget, I forget the number.
Like one fifty, one six, something like that?
Yeah, maybe one fifty, one sixty abatements.
And we encourage that process, you know, we're not afraid of that process because we think it only makes for fair, you know, fair values, you know, to receive abatements.
If you have a, I'm, I'm really not trying to get off track here, but I just want to understand this completely. So if your home's assessed at three sixty-four and you're paying four oh five, and you have a certified appraiser come in, you bring that appraisal into the town of Foxborough, what's the process?
Well, I just want to explain to you, our, our values are based on market value, and when we assess, our assessment for two thousand and thirteen is based on all the sales of calendar year two thousand and eleven. So we do instead, you know, we do all statistical analysis of all those sales, we go in the field and we, we look at all the sales and come up with that. And since it's market-driven, we, we have no control, that's by law, we have to use that market value from that period. That's how it is.
So, but
Based on what was there July, January first.
So what, what is, how, all right, here's my next question. How many people were granted those abate, uh, reduced assessments after abating?
But not knowing the, the figures of hand, I can't give you an exact number, but if there's a valid reason for an abatement, if there was an error on our part, let's say some information was incorrect, the board will grant the abatement, but if people just say, oh, my value is too high, then, you know, that's the reasoning behind there. So it has to be a reason, it has to be, something has to be wrong in order to
The board reviews it.
To get an abatement.
If I can, if I can get to, it has, I'm an appraiser, I'm a certified appraiser.
I'm just going to slide this over a little bit.
It has to be market-supported in order for us to either adjust the value up and down. We, you know, obviously the, the market values have changed significantly over the past few years. It is coming back, without a doubt, it's coming back slowly, but it is coming back. But we kind of go off, it, it's, it's a very personal thing when someone, you know, when someone is dealing value of properties in mining, in situations of a house, but the only, you know, what we do is, we don't decide what the value is, we have the support with the markets telling us the value is.
Right, but I understand.
If they come in to us and they say, listen, here are three comparables, and again, they have to give us comparable houses that are similar, but
Well, that's what you would get with an appraiser, you're going to get more than that.
That is correct. And if they give us comparables that show that our value's off, we would, without a doubt, look at that and reassess the value. There's no question about it. But some people come in, and, you know, they have a two thousand square foot house, and they'll give us comparable sales of nine hundred square foot ranches.
Oh, I understand.
Because it's in the same street.
But with a real estate appraiser?
The layman, the layman people don't, a lot of people don't come in with real estate appraisals.
Well, I'm just saying, let's say you just had your house, a, a lot of people refinancing, so a lot of people getting
Right. Well, if it's recent though, we, we can't use it, again, it's two calendar years back.
So you have to use two calendar years back?
Correct.
So that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, you have to use two calendar years back.
We've had
Two calendar years back, hang on, but the appraisal was thirty thousand dollars higher.
Right.
But it's all relative, though. It's all relative, everybody's on the same, on the same plane.
Right, but until in two years from now, you're going to go by the appraisal.
Yeah. But it was the same thing back in two thousand and three, four, and five, when everything was shooting skyrocket.
Right.
We were in two thousand and five looking at values from two thousand and three, that was fifty thousand dollars.
So it's like, it's like a two-year
Yep.
Backslap.
Yep. We've had people come in with appraisals, and what they'll do is they'll hire appraisal to value their property in
Today?
No, two years ago.
Okay.
And they'll look at the, and the same thing that Hana does, you just look at the sales for that calendar year, and it has to be a twelve-month calendar year, we need twelve months of sales. So they'll come in with that. We have it all the time, people come in and go, I just got my house refinanced, my house isn't worth that. We can't use it because that value is from two calendar years ago.
So that, that's why I want you to clarify this, because the question has been asked and raised many times to me.
Yes, that's exactly, that's it.
So that's why I want to clarify that.
But one other thing, you have to know too, what the, you know, somebody comes in with an appraisal, what was the appraisal for? Was it for refinance? There are different, is, wasn't for assessing, it was to refinance the property, not for assessment purposes. So, you know, we get a lot of appraisals, and the appraisals are only as good as the appraiser did the appraisal. You know, a lot of times I get stuff and I go, why are they going to rent them to, to look at, you know, a ranch house or a cape house? We have them right here in Foxborough. So an appraisal is as good as, you know, as your appraisal is.
But as he stated, a, a, a professional appraisal is, is about as good as evidence you're going to get, but it would be based on two years ago.
Actually, Hana goes out in the field constantly, she's always out in the field, you know, doing onsite inspections, you know, somebody can come, come to the office and ask, you know, and, and Hana's constantly making appointments, going out and reviewing, and then comparing to the sales database that, that she has in the system, because we have to, we have to maintain that. So, so, I mean, our chief assessor here does, this is her profession, she, I think she does a bang-up job in, in responding to challenges to value. We welcome that, as I said before, we want the values to be as tight as possible to make the equity, the burden as equitable as possible. And so she, she's very capable of doing that, certainly on the residential side.
So basically, that answers a lot of people's questions, that, you know, if you, because I've seen a decline in, in houses as far as appraisals go, I haven't seen an increase, and this board is telling me that they're coming back a little bit.
Relative to?
Two years ago.
Yeah, the bottom.
Not now.
No, to the bottom.
That's what you've got to kind of specify clearer, it's not based on today's market. So, because when people tell me that their property values have declined.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Bobby Hedge is talking about values in Foxborough today are slowly climbing, they're coming back.
I don't see that.
Well, he's an appraiser.
Yeah. We're looking.
Yeah, that's, that's what I want to hear, you know? I want to hear that my value's coming up.
And I, I said, it's very slight, but it's, I mean, I'm not, you know, you talk, I was just telling them in the office, you go in Boston, and they're coming back ten, fifteen percent easily.
Yeah.
Foxborough, and this, believe me, this is just that, one to two percent, three percent, you're not going to go, wow, my value's going way up, you know, because, but it's, it's edging up there, and it's not going down.
It's the good news. It's not going down anymore, that's the good news.
That's, that's it.
Well, I think that clarifies a lot of things for a lot of people, just our question.
And it's something that we were going to talk about at the end, I think was perfect for this, is the, all of the, the, the property information, all the cars that we have in the assessor's office is going online by the end of the calendar year.
End of the calendar year, that's
So the, you, everybody in town now will be able to go online and see their property and their neighbor's property, because that's not a secret. And you can see where your house value is compared to everybody else's. And if you see a huge discrepancy, you see that, you know, they're showing an extra bathroom that you don't have or an extra bedroom, and if you have a four-bedroom house and you're only being taxed in the assessor's office, if you want to come in and tell us that, too, that's fine, too, but that's something that's going to really help really tighten up all the values in town, because we, we're, we're there. I think we're comfortably at the ninety percentile right now with our, with, with the abatements that we've got over the last two years, and we found some discrepancies, and it's all being fixed, it's, it's, the, the data is very, very good now.
So we're very confident to, to put it out there, and we'll probably do, because this will be, you know, we're finally moving out of the stone age here with providing this, this information publicly, so we'll probably look to do a dog and pony, you know, to show, it's very brief in, in January, and then we would invite people to go online when it's available to look at it, and please come in if you have, you know, to the Board of Assessors' office if you have a question about your value.
Okay. Okay, so, and now, commercial property, last year you saw an increase?
I'm a residential appraiser, I'm not a commercial.
It's, it was, it was a
Both relatively, relatively flat.
Yeah, both relatively flat, but they wasn't moving.
But there was more, there was more value captured in total for, for business classes of property, so therefore the burden, if you maintain the current split, the burden would then be a little bit more disproportionate than the target the Board of Assessors has established. So what they're doing is they're acknowledging the fact that the business values in total have edged up a little bit, so with a split tax rate, it's, it's appropriate with the same logic that was used last year to feather back the split to acknowledge the increase in the share burden now being assumed, or would be assumed by business classes.
Basically, the advice you would give to everybody today, that if you have just had your house appraised, don't discard that information, keep it so that you can compare it in the future.
Sure, yeah.
All right, so what, what the board has done, and they took the liberty of evaluating, going back to the zero which we had last year, keeping what we have this year as a two point eight differential that we voted last year, or in effect splitting it in the middle and lowering to one point four the disparity between the businesses and the, and the residential. So our options are, we could pick A, B, or C, or do none of the above and something else.
You can do whatever you want. And there are, there are many, many options, that you get a, have a scorecard on page fourteen, or anything in, anything in between. You know, I can't say the sky's the limit, but, you know, up to seventeen point three six percent from no split to shifting seventeen. And there are a couple of towns, I'm not suggesting, but there are a couple of towns that actually do that, that, that shift all the way around here.
Those towns don't have a lot of businesses in it either.
Actually, Norwood, Norwood does one.
Norwood is
They go all the way.
Norwood is the ones that have a ton of business because the proportionate shift, it's a very, very large industrial, commercial base, so the proportionate shift doesn't hurt them in terms of the dollars, because it's dissipated over a big base, so the tax increase is not that bad. If you did it the other way, shifted a ninety-eight percent residential into a two percent industrial, it'd be a trend.
Yeah, so it's completely the opposite of what you would think.
Right.
Exactly.
And the other option we have, and I know Randy said you'd like an answer tonight.
If, if I don't want to push the board.
If the, if the board, there's a lot of information here, if you didn't get a chance to go through it, we could put it off to the next meeting, which is, we've got a full agenda next Tuesday, but we could come in early for this, if you need more time to take it under advisement. Any more discussion?
The message I've been getting is that the commercial property owners think they took a, a big hit, not only with the, with the tax increase, but also in the last few years you've been increasing fees, you know, I mean, they've taken a lot of hits, plus the economy is not good. So, and, and I think when a town, and it's always printed in the, in, in the books, when the town lists a split tax rate, I think that sends a message to prospective businesses that are looking at places to move into. And if you have a split rate, that, does that send a message, well, you know what, maybe they're not as business-friendly as this town over here that doesn't have a split tax rate. So that's my concern. I'm, I'm concerned about the, the business owners in town who live in town, they, you know, they took a hit. And I would, I would like to go back to a, was it one to one?
No, no split, no split.
No split.
Yeah, which would be about seven point one seven percent increase on residential.
Yeah, that would mean, I mean, the amount of tax revenue coming into the town is not going to change.
Right.
So it's not like we'd be getting more with a split tax, or we would be getting less with just a non-split tax. But I'm concerned about the message, and I'm concerned about the hit that the local businesses are taking.
I think the flip side to that, I mean, what we saw last year was, because of the anomaly in the economy, you know, in the despair, in the businesses going down relatively quickly in the residential, as much as the shift went to the businesses a little bit, the spike didn't hit the residential as much. And I think if, if it went the other way, you would have heard, you would have heard a loud scream from the residential that the taxes went way up. So I think we, we tried to buffer it.
Right.
So in my eyes, we either, you know, if we want to get back to that zero, and there's a lot of merit to that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean
But do we do it in one drop where now the residents gonna, by doing that, the residents is gonna take a big hit?
Yeah, I understand that. But we're also, we're also becoming known in the area, as you can read in the newspapers, as a non-friendly, non-business friendly, non-friendly to business. And what does that say?
Oh, it depends on who's arguing.
Yeah, yeah. Trust me.
There's
There's one today.
There's strong arguments on both sides too, so.
Yeah.
Loud arguments, I should say.
Well, if I can pick up on what Ginny's saying, what it really comes down to is, and I'd like to know the number of how many people that own commercial property in Foxborough actually live in the town. And I don't know if I stated this clearly last year. When you have debt exclusions for, you know, the library, possibly the new town hall, some turf fields, the high school, whatever, the people that own commercial property in this town don't have a voice at town meeting. Then they don't have any representation at all. So you now go to town meeting, you know, now you voted in at town meeting to have more debt exclusions, which we've had five or so in the last eight years, nine years, something like that, right, Randy? So now, the tax base, because of the debt exclusion to collect, has gone up. These people don't have any interest in the school systems. They don't have any, I mean, maybe public safety, of course, they own property. But they have no voice at the table. They don't get the vote. I'd love to know what that percentage of people that own property don't have the voice, the vote at town hall, at town meeting.
I don't think there's any way we can tell you that.
Well, I think there is. I think I could figure it out pretty quickly. I mean, if I just find out who owns those, those properties, the commercial properties in town, they either live in town or they don't live in town.
Now, you're gonna see LLCs and corporations, and it's hard to find out.
Well
Plus, you have all the personal property as well.
Right. Well, I'm just wondering what that is, but my point is they don't have a voice at the table.
I think what you can say, Mark, is that your point is, is correct generally. Business interests in most communities are not represented in terms of having a voice and a vote in the town's political process in the same proportion that homeowners do because homeowners basically 100% are eligible to vote, whereas some percent of business owners are not. And so it's always the case is that this is a, is it inequity there? And that's, that's a true fact. Now, I don't think we can tell you exactly what the numbers are, but I think what we can say with a fair degree of precision is that a lot of businesses don't have a voice in town politics. And that's the case. And it's not fair. That's unfortunate, but that's the reality that exists pretty much everywhere.
But then my point is now, a town votes to have debt exclusions to bring its, you know, high school back up to date, the public safety building, the Ahern School, soon to be this and that. And we're raising our own tax burden, and then I feel like we're passing the buck to the commercial base.
That's the shared responsibility. Everybody's benefiting from the community.
Yeah, they're using the infrastructure and the services and the value of the town. If the value of the town is high, the business is high, so it's, you know.
I think, I think if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think the interesting point you make, Mark, is that this community, unlike a lot of communities, I mean, let's face it, predominantly the businesses don't vote, homeowners do. So in a lot of communities, boards of select and elected representatives find it very easy politically to transfer that tax burden from homeowners to the businesses. And that's why you see around us, I think, many, many split tax rates because it's an easy decision to make. I think it's a wonderful comment about Foxborough, and particularly about the boards of assessors and the boards of selectmen who jointly make this decision, that you've resisted that temptation for many, many years. And this was the very first year that you ever split the rate, you ever transferred that tax burden on the businesses because I think you correctly adjudged that that's not good business practice. It's not a good way to make friends in the business community. And the only reason we finally did it this year was because of the proportionate shift in values that occurred, and it was just a logical decision. But the fact that the board is, you know, the assessors are recommending at least undoing half of the split that was done last year, if not undoing it altogether, and the fact that you're having this debate and making the points you're making, I think really shows that this is a politically mature community where we think hard about our partnership with the business community, and we don't just reflexively take the easy political way out and shift the burden. We don't. And that's good.
That was my next speech.
All right. I knew this. I got it all written here.
Stole my fire again.
I think, again, going back to the original reason why this was actually done for the first time and using that as the starting point, the easy thing would have been to leave it that way. Having recognized, I guess, the commercial values are inching upward in the right direction, and making that adjustment shows that it is the town's intent to get back to a single tax rate. It's not our intention to take advantage of businesses forever, or, you know, we're trying to avoid a spike in a situation that was gonna affect, you know, 75% of the taxpayers for the town, which are the residential taxpayers. So I think by addressing that spike, last year we did the right thing, and now coming back towards that neutral place, again, the board of assessors, I feel, is recommending the right thing. And again, you know, I think what you said, Jim, too, that the businesses do utilize the services of the town. So, you know, I don't feel like there's an inequity there. And when you look at the other choices that other towns have made, I think, again, we're going in the right direction to where, you know, we are, intend to be a business-friendly community. And I think we should be viewed that way.
I think, Lorraine, too, you made a good point. Any business coming in here is gonna be educated business, and they're gonna look and see, what was the split? They're not gonna say, okay, it's a split. What is the split? And if they come in and see, okay, we're at, we're at 2.7. If they saw it's going up, they're gonna think, okay, it's going up, you know, what's going on here? They're gonna come in and see it's going down. That's a very positive thing, I think, for businesses to see that, you know, we are taking this seriously. We've, I mean, we've done it, last year was the first time since we've been in here, ever. And we're not, it's not lightly. We're not taking it lightly. We're going down. We're trying to get back to where it can do it. So I think that's a good point. I mean, we have very educated, I mean, any business right now is coming in is very educated, and they're checking all towns, so.
Sure, Jenny.
They may check to see that this, this rate is going down. I mean, but it's still gonna, it's still gonna be split, and they aren't gonna know what it was previously.
I published, I published the history, three history on the website. It's on the site, they can see that.
Okay, but just one more thing, and I forgot to write it down. Not only have the businesses been hit, like with fees, like I said, but also every, especially the downtown businesses, everybody hits them for donations about things. So the downtown businesses really do contribute that little extra to the community.
Sure.
You know, so I mean, I really have a, I really have a hard time putting a, you know, not making it to me just a single tax rate so that it's fair. I mean, I just, especially in these economic times.
So you guys had a lot of discussion on the going back to the zero differential, the 50/50. And as the businesses came up and the tax burden came down, but not all the way, what that would do to the residential. You had a lot of discussion on that scenario?
Yes, we have been for the last two years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you thought, the reason you didn't recommend that, because the residential hit would be increased?
Well, if you just look at that right now, yeah, that's a huge hit for residential. And just go from where we, where we are today, back down. If that's what you wanted to do, that's a huge hit.
And I think that's what my concern is. I'd love for it to be 0/0, but
How can the residents take that huge hit?
Yeah, you can't because we're not there yet.
It's not fair.
Yeah. Hold on, George, let us finish, and I'll, and I'll recognize you. Linda, sure.
So I depend on you guys for this big time. Big years, it's just, it's not my thing, but my thoughts are, right after we did it last year, my thoughts were crap. I think I messed up because I felt like, you know, all the other years that I did it, I always said, no, it should be, you know, you know, we shouldn't do that. So I listened to you guys. I listened to Randy about, you know, the situation that we were in and made that decision that way. And I think that we wouldn't be looking at such a huge difference this year if we didn't make that move last year. My mistake.
Yeah.
I'm just, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, we're all saying, oh, no, this year it's gonna be worse because, you know, residential's gonna get harder, get hit harder. Well, yes, they are because, why? Because we automatically took that, too, you know, for something. I, I just, you know, it's just, it's killing me because I feel like we are again representing the numbers, and maybe I'm wrong on the numbers, but I just feel that obviously if we hadn't done that last year, the, the increase wouldn't have been as high.
Well, I think, again, last year was such an anomaly. I mean, I've been on the board, I don't even know. It might be nine, it could be 12, I don't remember. Nine years I've been on the board.
As many times as I've
10, 11, I don't know, remember.
You went in front of us, yeah.
But never, ever would I ever thought that I would be sitting in front of you saying, we gotta split the rate. Never, never.
I know it was.
My brother didn't talk to me for two weeks.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure he did.
And I knew that, I wasn't gonna say anything. I don't want to put you on the spot.
But that, but, but I, but you rarely look at those numbers last year, and it was just, you know, and I don't want to screw this up, but Mike Capron always used to say that we're the protectors of fairness.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's basically what board of assessors do. We just make sure that everybody's got, you know, paying what, you know, they're, they're supposed to be paying. Everything, and that's all we really do. You just look at the numbers that way. You have to take everything out of it from the outside and all the other, you know, things pushing on you. Just look at it, what's right and what's wrong when you're looking at those numbers. And last year was just, I, I think you did make the right decision last year because it was so far off.
Linda, you really, the board really shouldn't beat itself up about the decision last year because frankly
I'm not talking about the board, I'm only talking about Linda.
Well, you shouldn't either.
I'm only talking about me.
If ever there was a perfect situation, you know, the perfect storm, if you will, of, you know, debt coming online due to prop 2.5 overrides, a proportionate shift in values where the homeowner's residential is gonna take a big adjustment, a bigger share. It was a situation that cried out to give some relief to the homeowner. It just was. So I don't think you should feel badly about that. It was a logical decision. And I think, you know, it was made with a great deal of consternation. I remember when we talked about it, but it was an eminently logical decision. Now, what I think is being said to the board is that market shift is beginning to correct. The amount of new taxation coming online due to overrides and whatnot is lessening. It's now you've got an opportunity to undo what we had to do frankly last year. I think the only real question is you undo half of it, or you undo all of it, or do you undo 3/4 of it? Kind of up to you.
The shock and awe of that whole Kevin thing last year was, it was doomsday when we made that decision. The town was about $2 million in, in projected debt and looking at, you know, major layoffs. Came right out of your mouth, came out of more than one mouth here. We're looking at guaranteed layoffs. It was doomsday around here.
Yeah, but that really doesn't have anything to do with the
Well, it does because that's what made this board have a major effect on how we decided last year. And it was a very big thing. You were talking about $2 million deficit to the operation budget. You were talking about, you know, layoffs, and the teachers were saying, oh, we're gonna have 50 layoffs to the parents and the PTO, and it came back to us. And then we took, oh, this is what was happening in my world, okay? So maybe it wasn't yours, it was mine. And then people around town were really pissed. A lot of people were really mad at us. And I, we had to take, that was a bigger hit I took last year than a lot of things. Second biggest, that's for sure. But, no, it was a big adjustment for this community. And then at the end of the year, we had a chance to give back another $403,000 and adjust it back a little bit, and we didn't. We kept the money. We voted to keep the money and tax to the, to the 2.3% instead of 2.5. And we, instead of giving it back to the, to the townspeople and a little bit of a tax break.
Well, we gave, we gave it back, but we gave it back a different way.
Yeah, just so clear, we didn't keep the money. It was, we reduced a bond, $400,000 to pay off a bond early.
Exactly. I'm just saying, we've had opportunities. We went from $2 million in operation budget, and, and the skies are falling. You said it yourself publicly, Jim. I believe you did anyways. It was a long year. And, and it was like, you know, and now we went from gloom and doom to a significant, you know, extra budget. So I don't know. It, it got very confusing at the end. And here we are again, we're having the same conversation, and we're projected to have extra income this year in the operating budget. And if I'm wrong, somebody correct me.
I'll, I'll take, we don't want to say we have extra income this year because we haven't, don't even have a revenue forecast done yet.
We just did one, Kevin, for the town hall. We were gonna use revenue forecasts.
That's looking at something in isolation. Right now, pulling at all, all pieces, spending, you know, estimates and revenue estimates.
All that's, I think it's important for the board to understand, the total amount of taxes we're gonna raise, i.e. how many employees we can have, how much money we can spend, is not affected whatsoever by this decision in front of you tonight. Think of it this way, the pie is this big. Whatever you decide tonight, the pie is identically the same size. We're going to raise the exact amount of taxes either way. The only decision before you tonight is proportionately who pays what part of the, of the tax burden. Does the residential homeowner pay a little more or a little less? And to the extent they pay a little more or a little less, business pays a little more or a little less.
I think we all understand that. I think that's perfectly clear. But I'm just saying, last year's decision, when Linda did her defense, she took a lot of hits to say everybody else when we split it a little bit to the percentage, that it was to many people, and this board was because of that decision.
It wasn't until after the fact when all of a sudden there was, there was other discussions about, you know, found money, so to speak, type of things. That's what I
I think, my recollection on the
I don't know. Anyways, what I was trying to say was, you know, we're looking at this as, you know, the townspeople are gonna take this huge hit this year, and they're gonna take this huge hit because we made that decision last year. That's why it looks so much worse than it actually would be if we, if we stayed, you know, if we went back to the zero from where we are now. So
No, that's not accurate.
I think that's
That's not accurate.
What is it? What's the matter?
No, I think she's saying
I think if you let her finish, she'll
No, I think what she's saying is if we didn't split it last year
If we didn't split it last year, the, the, the amount wouldn't be, the percentage wouldn't be as much this year.
From going to 2.08 back to zero.
Unless you're not saying that, if we go back to a zero, it's not gonna be a huge hit. Is it gonna be a huge hit for the residential?
This year, yes.
Please let me just work this through myself.
Yep.
Okay, so it will be a huge hit.
Yes, 7
And it's gonna be 7.17, right?
Yep.
Okay, so if we didn't take that
If we stayed at a single last year, what would it have been this year?
What would it have been?
It's a good question. Right, but think, think about how much more the residences would have paid if we didn't do that last year. So they would have a larger hit last year and not as much this year. You know what I'm saying?
I think that's what she's asking. If it was 7% this year, if they didn't do it last year, what would it be?
What would it be?
I don't know.
Yeah, we'd have to look at that. But it was significant hit last year if you didn't split it last year.
And the, and the average business tax rate was actually going down, you know, a couple of points, and the residential rate was going up a, you know, significant amount of points.
And that's what, that's what we struggled with last year.
Yeah.
And we're struggling, how can we let, not let, how can we see the commercial get a break and the residential people take more of a hit?
Well, and that, and that's fine for your board, but do you understand, like, our budget? We'd like to see other things take hits instead of people themselves, too. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I have to do. I don't know if the, I don't know if the same scenario, though. I mean, again, like you said, the pie's gonna be the pie, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be the same.
Correct me if I'm mistaken, my memory's not that good anymore. But last year, I believe, the shift saved the average homeowner about $100.
Correct. $101.
Okay, so what's this year? Bear in mind, Linda, what we saved, what's being discussed as a enormous shift is $100. That's the enormous shift.[1777.61]
Right.
The percents are big, but the, because the residential share of the town's, um, revenue is so huge, that 7% shift only added up to $100 per average homeowner. Conversely...
Hold on a second, George, I'm getting complaints at the table, your, your voice just keeps coming up. Can you just hold it? I, I will recognize you once we finish this discussion.
Anybody's welcome to go outside and speak.
Conversely, were you to completely undo the shift this year? I believe, if I've heard the numbers correctly, and again, I'm just trying to find it.
Yeah.
It means giving the homeowner $109 greater tax bill on average, correct?
And there's a drop.
358 on average.
Drop.
Average based on 38ish.
You got that number there?
Average based on, um, 365.
I, I do, I, I totally understand what you're saying, and I guess I don't have that, I wouldn't remember what those numbers were, yeah.
And that's okay, it's okay. It's all right, I just had to...
Yep.
And just so you know, Linda, the...
Work it through, yeah.
I was trying to work it through in my head, and I just had to have clarification from you, I think.
Okay. Last year's decision was a little hasty, so I'm, I'm letting this go a little longer, so I think this discussion's helpful, so let's let it out.
I think the way you set it up this year, I think, you know, this is reality. We're in reality now, and again, I think you're right. It was the way it had always been done, we walked in and go, single rate, and that was the end of the discussion. And I think, I'm not gonna say we blindsided you, because I walked into that meeting not realizing, I, I was going into that meeting that we were going to a single rate, too. But I think what you've set up to move forward, I think, I think I speak for the Board that this works, and I think it, it's, it gives a better communication, you know, to, that you're not getting, um, you know, you got the letter, the cover letter with your packet, what, that we were gonna come in with a split rate, didn't say what it was, but you, you knew that we were coming in with something.
Something, yeah.
So, at least you, forces you to...
Yeah, I share the same sentiment as Linda. I walked out to the car, and I said, what the hell did just hit us? But I looked at your Board, and you've got a lot of longevity and a lot of years, and a lot of business families, so for you guys to say it was a split rate, it, it was a little comfort in that, because you wouldn't have done it unless it had a lot of merit. And I think that's why, I think we voted so fast. This year, I think we absorbed a year of, you know, there were some angry businesses, as, as you said, Linda. Um, I'm not sure if we, I haven't heard from any residents to say thank you, that they could use the extra $100 that they saved, so I'm not sure if people even realized it. But sitting at this table today, the political, if you wanna call it the ramifications of a business coming in, and they're treated different than the residential, even though it's $100, it's, it's a huge ripple effect. Um, it, has it stopped businesses? You know, we just had a huge business come in, I don't know if that was a factor, it may, it may or not.
Right, you don't know.
It's just speculation.
Well, actually, we're seeing, you know, growth, I mean, growth is coming back again, we're coming off the lows and the, between the Chief Assessor and the Building Commissioner and I, our, you know, our growth, you know, forecast is improving, you know, in the next couple of years.
And, and the other towns are doing it, and now the other towns are starting to go back a little bit, so I don't think we're doing anything that was not, um, if there's such thing as an industry standard, I think you were being proactive.
Jim, I just wanna make sure the Board has the right number in front of them in terms of what the decision means to the average homeowner, 'cause that sounds like an important discussion. Looking at your exhibit on page six, if I'm reading this correctly, if the Board votes to essentially undo 50% of the shift that occurred last year, the average homeowner's savings is $75.32, correct?
Yes.
From, versus, versus, you know, going back to a, a, a single rate.
Yeah, but if we go to the split, they're not saving 75 there, it's increasing 75.
So, I just want the Board to have the flavor, the percentages sound big, but the dollars that we're dealing with for savings one way or the other for the homeowner are ver, are not gigantic dollars here.
Okay.
So, if the Board decides to undo the whole thing, we're not talking a massive shift onto the homeowner, you know, that's not the case. And I, I, I just think it's important to understand the dollars here, is it, I thought I heard it being said that this is a massive shift.
So, it's seven, seven, over a 7% increase in residential taxes on average.
Which adds up to how many dollars for an average homeowner.
For the, for the a- average, average home, um, it's actually, was it $358, if I recall?
Yeah.
Yeah, 358, so the aver- average home, the average value, 300...
It's basically a hundred, it's a hundred dollars per hundred, it's a buck for every thousand.
Rough and tough.
Which is, which is why they're recommending doing roughly half that undoing, if you will, half of what was last year, with the goal in mind that if the market values continue to go as they're going, next year you'd do the same thing, and we would be back to status quo.
But this is absolutely one of those discussions you need to have, so everybody understands the process and you're educating both everybody here, the people, because a part of our job is to educate people on what decisions we're making. That way, we don't have to validate it later.
All right, now, this i- is a public hearing, we've kept it open for the discussion. Once we close it, we can't get new information. So, I asked once, uh, and there was no speakers, is there anyone else that wants to speak?
I don't have to, I apologize if my voice was carrying as well as it was, but Kevin, you...
George, if you're gonna speak, you do need to come to a microphone.
I'm not gonna speak, I'm sorry.
I don't have anything to say.
George, why don't you all just throw, sorry that my voice was carrying as it was. Um, we're having a discussion back here, sort of related, but I don't have anything to say, as Kevin brought up the fact that this whole thing is based on market values, and the total market value, which he didn't say, of business, this year is here to homeowners here, where last year it was like this. And since they, everybody paid the same rate, if there was no equalizing of the percentages, the businesses would have paid much more, much less than the homeowner would. So, the factor of a hit, that's not the subject. It's how is the rate being balanced off on the assessed values?
I think, I think, and summarize, I think we're just trying to equalize, equalize the, the difference, you know, bring it somewhere in the middle. So... Okay, um, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second by Lorraine. Any more discussion on closing it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero to close it. Um, more discussion?
I'm educated.
So, we're going from 2.08 to 1.42?
Yes.
So, that's like going down...
I'm sorry, I was saying 2.8, but you're right, it's 2.08 to 1.4.
About 25% roughly.
About 25%?
Roughly.
Not half, not really going half. So, would we, you guys thinking of, like, chipping away at this, or do you think maybe next year we'd get back to the...
You just, we don't know. You don't, but every year's different, yeah. I mean, Meditech is moving in, that's great. It's a huge building that is, you know, no longer empty. Um, you know, there's, there's some other stuff on the horizon, hopefully, that pan out in town, and, and I think that'd be great, and the more that you get, um, businesses into town, I guess you can, you can...
And, and just, so, so, just for the record, um, next year fiscal 14 is a revaluation year, and, um, because of, uh, you know, tightening, ever tightening Department of Revenue standards, I think, um, you know, inspections on 50% of our property, you know, have to, 50% have to be visited. So, um, it will have yet another, um, you know, benchmark year for the town, you know, or...
Like 2010.
Like 2010, you know, so I, it, it's gonna be, um, a great litmus test, I think, to see, you know, what, what have we missed, you know, along the way, what's changed that we're, you know, that we're not seeing, that people aren't coming forward with, that we're not capturing. So, um, you know, it, it'll be very interesting to see, you know, how, how that shifts things next year.
Would the Board consider, um, and I know we don't have the numbers for these, um, I was going, I thought it was 2.8 down to 1.4. If we go 2.8, 2.08, so let's call it 2, 2.0, down to 1, with the steps a little faster going back to zero, it takes, uh, it gives the, a little more confidence to the businesses that we're, uh, moving in them back in the right direction. It's not as much of a, an increase on the residential. Um, it's a little nicer story to say for business that's coming in, that we're, you know, maybe it's a two-year process, this is the first year, we, we halved it, and the second year we go back to zero, not knowing what the next Board is gonna do.
Jim, with clarification, after we close the public hearing, should we have, should this discussion only be amongst the Board, or should this...
Yeah, this is, this is for the Board, this is for the Board.
We've already, I think it's, we've already had our meeting, and we've come up with our recommendation, now it's, it's you.
When the public hearing is closed, should you guys be participating in the Board's discussion? I'm asking for clarification, I'm not saying I know the answer.
Um, I'd, I'd appreciate if you stay at the table. If there's a question, it's a little out, but, um, I'm sure somewhere in some book you need to leave the table, but, um, I'm comfortable with you guys staying. You've been here a lot longer than I have. Um, so, I, my question to the Board, with that...
So, like, going from 2.08 to 1.04, that's more of a 50 instead of a quarter, so...
It's exactly what I...
I just feel like if we're...
Try, Linda.
Sorry, Mark. I'm just thinking, you know, it comes down to a quarter instead of a half, and I just think, you know, we kinda said both cut it in half, we're not really cutting it in half. Right now, it's down to a quarter, and I just think that was...
You mean, cutting it a quarter?
A third, actually.
Yeah, but my suggestion would bring it down to a half.
Right, so, like, 1.04, I would, you know, if, I don't know if we wanna kinda look at what that would, what numbers that would be, or...
Yeah, it's, uh, actually, it's on, on page, page 14. 1.04 conveniently is one of the, one of the choices that spit out of the program, thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
So, it's, um, it would be a, uh...
Didn't you have a previous discussion, global glass?
Honestly, I didn't, I, I just read my material.
You've got a heavy weight, Linda.
I know, I, I...
So, it's a, it's, it's a $52.74 savings compared to a, a single rate for the residential on average, and then for the business, it's a $285.86 shift, um, to, to business on average. It's just approximately half of, um, it's actually exactly half, 1.04 percent.
And that gets me to a little more confidence that we'll get to where we need to next year, and not, um, jump back to...
Well, if we have another, another 2010 coming at us, I don't know.
Which is very possible. I mean, I mean, January 1st, things are gonna, unless something happens in the, you know, federal government, this, you don't know what's gonna happen next year. It could be far worse than what it ha, you just don't know.
And, and that's why I'm...
There's a whole lot bigger things going on with federal tax code than anything we're not...
Right, right. But I mean, but that affects, but that affects the, you know, things will affect businesses, small businesses, big businesses...
And residential, too.
And resi, yeah, and residential, too.
National healthcare, Medicare load, 3 point something percent, a whole bunch of things going on.
Mm-hmm. I, I think it's a good compromise.
I, I was, I don't know how we all, four of us, four out of the five were thinking the same thing.
What?
1.4, I was thinking, Jimmy said it, you agree?
1.04.
1.04, I think is what Jimmy was saying.
Just because, you know, I think that's where I was going the whole time.
Well...
So, um, I'm glad we all kinda concur after that long debate, so if you guys are all set...
Careful when you, when you put things like that, Mark. That's all I'm saying. I'm, I'm just saying, you know, it's like when, sometimes when you say I can compensate some things.
I didn't say that, I said, I'm glad that we all kinda had the same idea, 'cause it gave it a compromise, is what I was saying, that's what the Board's about, compromise.
Oh, but I'm not hearing that from Jenny.
No.
I think, and I respect what she's saying, yeah.
I said four of five. Is anybody listening tonight? Frank, you listening? Somebody else can make the motion.
Well, you, you had a motion on the table, Mr....
Yeah, we did.
He didn't finish it, it was a partial motion.
So, motion to approve a 1.04?
Actually, it's, it's, you vote the residential factor, and it's the column just to the left of that, which is .989584, you see that one? The fourth, the fourth line, fourth line down?
Not...
.986112.
No, 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 it's that, when we're talking about shifting the burden, the, the number's actually on the right-hand side.
Oh, 1.04.
On the left side, that's a Department of Revenue convention, but the percentage shift is on the right, right-hand side. So, to, to reduce it by a half, that, that, that other line would not reduce it by a half. It would be this, uh, this, um, 1.04 percent, and the factor would be .989584. You would, you would vote that factor, if that's what the Board's saying.
Actually, 986112, the one below it.
No, it's, no, it's the, it's the one above it?
1.04.
Don't, don't pay any attention to the, the convention that the Department of Revenue is on the left in their, in their math, but the actual percentage shift is in the far right-hand column.
Could you circle that and pass me, so I can put on the record, Lenny, for her?
We got it.
You got it now?
So...
Yeah, we were there, and then we went...
.989584.
Well, if that's what, you know, that's what's voted.
So, mo, the motion is to approve, to vote a residential factor of .989584 with a tax
burden percent shift at 1.04 percent.
Okay, motion made, second.
Second.
Motion made, seconded by Mark. Any further discussion?
Okay, so, this is rather than a single?
Correct.
Rather than a single, it's, it's half, 50% of what it was last year.
Of last year.
Okay, any more discussion, questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries, four does it, uh, four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I don't have that scenario for you to sign, but I'll, I'll have that by the time, your meeting's ended, I'll leave it for, for Kevin to pass around, so I could forward this along to the D O R, so you'd sign.
Thank you, you guys, thank you.
Yeah, this was another tough one, thank you very much. Appreciate it. See you next year.
All right, where's the agenda? A little, little late. We have a 7:40 discussion on National Grid. I put this on the agenda, I sent you all the email, basically, uh, right in the middle, or right after Hurricane Sandy. Um, I reached out to Marcy Reed, who's the President of National Grid, and basically the email said, look, I know, um, there's another, a lot of areas, and you guys are busy, 'cause there's a lot of places that got a worse hit. With respect to Foxborough, you know, we've had a lot of the special meetings, uh, all of last, the two storms last year, and in this year, and I gotta say, I'm pretty confident that Foxborough did everything that we could do with respect to the DPW, with respect with respect to the D P W, with respect to our coordination, our emergency preparedness. But at the end of the day, we were standing there with our hands in our pockets, waiting for National Grid to fix something. And primarily, you know, some of the stuff was in Foxborough, the majority was not in Foxborough. And it just keeps coming back to the, I was saying, the national, the union loop. That, from the people I'm talking to outside of National Grid, or they used to work for National Grid, it's an issue. And it's not being addressed as quickly as it should be. It's antiquated, it's problematic, it affects us. So I asked Marcy Reed to come tonight, and I asked Bob Russell, who's a customer manager and our liaison, Tom Coughlin, and they respectfully said no. And I don't have a problem with them saying no, because they were in the middle of the nor'easter that came up. And what Marcy was saying, you know, a lot more can get accomplished in a small group to find out what the issues are and move it along, rather than in front of the microphones and cameras, because people can speak freely off the cameras, and, and that's fine. So I didn't want to turn it into a, "Well, if you don't come, we're gonna, you know, beat our chests again and go to the newspaper." But at the same time, I do want those meetings to happen. I don't want to forget about it, because it'll come either again in the winter or next year. But is there somebody that wants to sit with Marcy in that group, and representatives, probably Kevin, probably less Chief O'Leary and more Chief Hatfield from the Fire Department, and ask the questions, "What is the issue with the union loop?", and get some answers? And then do a follow-up with the D P U? Because I thought it was effective last year. Linda went, I went, and we testified at the D P U. And honestly, I think that was a big factor in the big fines that were levied. Will we get any of that money? Most likely not, because it's gonna get someplace else. But I'm prepared to go with a letter from the selectmen again, saying, "Nice try, it was better service. Nice people at National Grid, they sat with us, but it was ineffective in the big picture, because you look at Mansfield, you look at Walpole, you look at Rentham, everyone around us had an easier time than Foxborough." So somewhere, there's a switch. I don't know if it needs to be a new switch or better wires, but put some pressure on National Grid through the D P U and put it on record that we just weren't happy at this.
Right, and I, my thought is, you know, fine, if they don't want to come to the table, they don't want to come to the table, you know, that's fine. And I just think that we should put together our thoughts, put it on the agenda, put our thoughts down, and have Sandra type it up, and we go again to the D P U hearings. I don't, I don't really, I don't have anything more to say to them. You know, Tom was here, nice guy, like you said, great guy. But in the morning, he's telling me one thing, I'm going home and then telling everybody, "Don't worry about it, you know, we're all set, because he already worked on the union loop, and they did all the street from him, we're gonna be fine." And then, six hours later, we're here before, you know, and guess what? That's, that was not the case, so.
Okay.
As far as, I, I don't, I think sitting with them at the table isn't gonna do anything. I just think we should just put our thoughts together and go have at it.
Okay. Fair enough. Anyone else? Hold on a second. Anyone else from the board? Kevin?
I think the one area you need to explore, whether you do it with them at the table or you do it to the D P U hearing, I think we absolutely have to do it. And that's the union loop. And gathering some evidence, having discussions with a number of experts in the industry, electrical engineers, there's also a group in Massachusetts which has organized to pass legislation to allow cities and towns to form union corporations. They put together a huge volume of material. The key problem that we continue to experience is the union loop, because it's...
That's what we've been told, yeah.
It's an antiquated piece of transmission capability.
Right.
We've got it on the governor's radar screen. I don't know if you heard, but the governor mentioned it in a post-storm speech.
Yeah.
As one of the two most significant power outage issues in the Commonwealth of Mass. So we've got it really out front. My suggestion to the board is you don't lose the momentum that we've gained, and you have some sort of a discussion about it, whether you do it privately with the National Grid, you do it publicly here with your, with the legislators, most certainly through the D P U process, again, by filing a letter expressing your concerns, whatever it is you decide to do. I think if we drive that issue, the union loop, we're gonna be well-served in the future. It's the only key weakness left. I give National Grid credit. They did a lot of good tree work this summer, and trees wasn't the problem this time. We had a few, but it wasn't, you know, a big problem. It wasn't line crews. They had the line crews here, they responded. There's a little gap at one point. Within an hour or so, they flooded the town with line crews. So I think we've turned the corner in a big way, and they deserve some credit for what they improved on. The key thing is this union loop, that big bucks, it's not something they're gonna do willingly, it's something we're gonna have to press the issue on with our neighboring communities, because we're not the only ones affected. Five out of twelve sections of that union loop went down again. It's because it's antiquated technology. Nobody strings cross-country transmission lines on telephone poles anymore. So, however the board decides to do it, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, up to you.
So I'm just making a suggestion that, you know, thank you to National Grid, if they want to meet with us, fine, but take the proactive step. Maybe we draft a letter to the Department of Public Utilities and saying, "We have a formal complaint. This is the, the third in two years, and we need some answers, and how do you want to address it?"
I mean, you brought up the fact, you know, you've already spoken to people about the integrated system. You, you spoke about that, and I think if we put it as an agenda item, we can ask the public, they have things that they want to say, we'll put it into our thing. If they want to come, it's fine.
At this point, I, I think, I, I know what the public's thinking. I mean, I heard it day and night for...
They're thinking the same thing that we're thinking. They're thinking the same thing we are.
Yeah.
You know what bothered me about the, the huge fine that the state put on National Grid? That money went right back into the state coffers. That money was not designated for fixing the union loop. So that did absolutely nothing for, for us. It just cost National Grid the money that should have been used, forced upon them to fix the union loop. So that would be something, you know, when you go to the D P, D P U discussions, I mean, lay that one out.
Yeah. I know part of the process on the fines before was the, the money, there was no other vehicle for it to come back to the, the ratepayers. But they did talk about, kind of like when you're on a, at the tarmac or the airport, and you're sitting there for six hours, that money comes directly back to you with respect to paying for your ticket or giving you a voucher or a reduction, it doesn't get back to the airlines. So they did talk about that as a next step. So I'm thinking this letter would help push that along.
Yeah.
We're not gonna get a municipal lighting company, we're just not gonna do it. I know we kicked that around last year, I think we're fooling ourselves. So I, I think maybe that's the benefit of getting this in front of the D P U, it helps that next step anyways, so. So Kevin, can you, if it's all right with the board, draft up a letter? And basically, the Foxborough residents have lost out again on monetary, refrigerators, the daycare, all that stuff. We're not getting any further comfort that this is being addressed outside of Foxborough, and, you know, ask them what they can do for us?
The first I can suggest, Mr. Chairman, is that we have council draft a formal complaint letter, as we did the last time, to the D P U to be entered into the record of the proceeding. We can't bring suit ourselves, we can't make a complaint ourselves. We make the complaint to D P U, it really goes to the Attorney General, who's the only party that can actually enter into an action against them. But we'll be on the record, and then the follow-up is if one of you wants to testify to that letter, then you get to do it. Or town council or myself, if you're not available. But it's more effective coming from an elected official, frankly. And that's a good way to get our notes on the record.
Okay. So we'll, we'll have the attorney do that, and then I'll also reach back out to Marcy, saying it was the wish of the board, we're going in that direction, but still offer if she wants to have a meeting.
And, you know, we just took two moments on this subject, and everybody stayed, instead of having an email, Kevin, one, you know, what they think the effects were. One was definitely the schools shut down for two more days. You know, I mean, that's the big thing that comes to me with four children at home. So, you yourself, I understand. So, I mean, and then if your wife works in another town, she's going, it's a very difficult situation, we all know that, but that's a big factor, for having to shut down the schools. And then, you know, you get the seniors that lose out on electricity in their facilities. But any you need, want that on that letter, I suggest you block it out right now, and those are my two biggest things.
Well, I understand that Wayne Drive, they were told, oh, they can't get, get the electricity back, because you need four crews to do it.
Right, well, that was...
And it wound up, one guy did it. When they finally got the, the truck back, one guy took care of the whole street. Well, that one guy could have taken care of the whole street earlier.
That was private tree damage, that was the big difference in that and the union loop. But, I mean, I understand, but, I mean, as far as them dispatching equipment to some of the areas, I mean, I know there were more crucial areas, and unfortunately, that's part of it, you know, I mean, some still were very crucial.
But don't tell us, don't tell us that there's six crews in Foxborough waiting for the storm to come, when there wasn't, you know? And, and again, Tom's just doing his job, but, you know, I went, I left here with a pretty good feeling about, you know, weathering the storm was not the case. So, you know, we definitely, you know, the union loop has got to be addressed, and, you know, just don't, you know, if it, if it can't be fixed, then just tell us, it can't be fixed, and for the next twenty years, folks in Foxborough, you, you're gonna lose your power for whatever, so that at least we can prepare for it.
Maybe the D P U can buy everybody a generator with all that money they got sitting fat.
Maybe, maybe.
All right, so you get, you have the flavor of, maybe reach out to Chief Hatfield, and maybe he's got some added costs and expenses and aggravation he could put in there.
While we're on the storm, I know, you know, I thank everybody, the public officials and everything, but I did get a couple calls from folks that had called the D P W about, you know, getting some trees out of the way, because they were, you know, still without power. And then the trees came down because of the snow, and then they were concerned of, like, they haven't been down there plowing. So, you know, if, if they can just do a little bit better with the roads, the, some of the side roads, you know, there was one little sweep down this road, and there was senior citizens living there. A phone, you know, two neighbors had called, left a message with D P W, but nobody ever came back to do that, so...
Yeah, I think I might have gotten the same messages.
Yeah.
The basic problem was, from around here to over to Southborough, you know, what was supposed to be a, a one-inch accumulation, maybe had best turned into six to nine inches in the space of just a few hours, and it got, it got ahead of us fast.
Right.
And, in fact, we didn't have the plows on, we had the salters on. We had to bring trucks back in, put the plows on, send them back out. And by the time we got one pass of the whole town made, which of course takes hours, then it was already melting. And so making additional passes was really questionable if it was a proper expenditure of the public's money.
But they knew it was gonna...
It was unusual.
You know, you knew it was gonna, I mean, I'm no weatherman, but I knew it was gonna freeze overnight, and, you know, turns to ice, and then you get a problem with, you know, seniors out there, and, you know, I, I don't know, Channel Seven and Channel Five, they knew, right, you know, they knew before we knew that, you know, we were gonna get hit, I guess, because they were up at the common, interviewing everybody under the sun, like, I, you know, people were saying to me, "What happened in Foxborough?", there's a Channel Five and Channel Seven. I'm like, "I don't know what happened, you know, what was this, no? Were we the only ones got hit? No." But, so just, you know...
They left, they left here fairly soon and went to Southborough, by the way, so they got nine inches out there.
Better story, yeah.
Happy to have them.
Leave it alone.
I was surprised, this, the storm, the snowstorm last week, I mean, I was at a meeting, and then by the time I got home, I barely, I barely got to my house, and my car's freezing in the snow. It took me almost an hour to get out my driveway, and not that, not, you know, my driveway's not the town's problem.
All right.
However, getting, you know, going home, it was, it was pretty bad.
Yeah, it was bad.
You know...
There was a lot of, little incidents, so...
Yeah.
I mean, public safety did do their job, but it was, yeah.
It is New England.
And it was, you know, it was Halloween, you know?
And I know that, and that's why I bought a car, that's, that's good in the snow.
Halloween.
All right. Any more discussion on National Grid? The next thing on the agenda was a request for the town user fee waiver for the Maya 2012 Football Super Bowls at Gillette Stadium. Is there representatives from Maya?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President?
Please do.
The last time I was in this room, and the last thing that was said was, "See you next year." I didn't hear that again.
And here we are.
You're right.
Thank you. If you'd just want to introduce yourself, sure.
My name is Bill Gaines, and I serve as Deputy Director Emeritus of the M I A A. The emeritus thing is, I'm old, and this past July, I retired from thirty-three years of full-time service to the association. But I'm still with them on a part-time basis, and very interested and involved in this particular issue. And the gentleman to my left is Mr. Richard Pearson, who has replaced me full-time. We went to Foxborough to get our expertise, and Richard served as Assistant Principal at Foxborough High School for a number of years. He's a resident of the town, and most recently, as Principal of Medway High School. So he's been aboard since July first, and will be very much involved in tournaments and our M I A A structure.
Great soccer team.
Yes. But I am a thirty-seven-year resident of Foxborough. I was Assistant Principal here for four years, back in two thousand, two thousand and four, and then went to Medway. Now I have the fortunate opportunity to work in, at the State Association across the state of Massachusetts.
How do you feel about your taxes?
I was excited about the union loop and the town, you guys did good today.
Okay, so you have a request. Can you explain the, the request?
Absolutely. And maybe I just should preface it, because I'd, I'd be happy to take your direction with respect to how comprehensive you'd like this presentation. We did have the benefit of a lengthy debate and presentation last year in preliminary meetings, as well as presenting to you materials. That didn't happen this year, not by our negligence, I hope, and I hope that's not the case, that you think, it's just that we weren't asked for that, and, but we certainly wanted to get back before you, because the request is, is very important to us. This would be the sixth year consecutively that we're asking you to consider waiving this fee on tournament tickets at Gillette Stadium for M I A A Super Bowls. I, I know that the majority of you know who we are, what we do, and I probably should just give a, a quick glimpse of, to the new members...
Yeah, just so you know, four of us are new, and I think we all were here.
No, four of us aren't.
I mean, I'm sorry, four of us were here last year, and listen, we have one member that is new. And I apologize, I probably should have asked you for more comprehensive, something in the packet, so, in fairness, I don't know if you watched it on cable last year?
Yeah.
Okay, so, she, she wasn't on the board last year, but she did see it from home on, on the cable TV.
Okay, so with that, should I...
As far as history, that's...
History of the M I A A and the, you know, maybe you could talk about the, the benefits of the M I A throughout, and, and kind of what you do during the day at the stadium, to kind of put it in, in a home context.
Okay, and I'll, I'll also provide the rationale of why we could use this consideration.
Sure.
But the short version of who we are is, basically, we are a nonprofit educational association with three-hundred-and-seventy-five members throughout the state, from P Town to, to the Berkshires. And Foxborough obviously has been a, a member since the inception of the association. We are regulatory, rules and regulations for student eligibility and a level playing field for students. We sponsor all high school tournaments, boys and girls, in thirty-four different sports. And we are very active and aggressive in terms of promoting the benefits of participation through an educationally-based, interscholastic educational curriculum. And that curriculum consists of basically five pillars, in which specifically, it would be wellness, coaching education, sportsmanship, community service, and student leadership. And those are the, the values that we try to teach, using the vehicle of interscholastic athletics, to us, student athletes. We have almost a quarter of a million student athletes, boys and girls, that do participate in our association. Vis a vis our tournament structure, which is significant in terms of number and number of participants. We have probably two-hundred-and-fifty distinct postseason tournament experiences for our boys and girls. That is on a regional basis, north, south, central, west, and then we go on to state tournament play. We have a significant tournament budget, and that is as high as three-point-five million dollars. And the number of events, as I mentioned, voluminous. Now, in terms of revenue, our biggest assets come in the form of just three tournaments, football, ice hockey, and basketball. And there are as many as twenty-three tournaments beyond that that have to be subsidized by those revenues. We happen to have a wonderful opportunity, not only for the experience that our student athletes have at Gillette Stadium, but in terms of, if you would call it a business relationship, it's one in which we are significantly benefiting because of almost no expenses. So that means that the ticket revenue for that particular sport and that particular event does accrue the association significant dollars. But I want to point out, that's what it's used for, is a subsidy of all of the other tournaments. We have a lot of challenges that I'll share with you, just very briefly. We're in a situation where, yes, we do write anticipated budgets and what we expect annually from revenues, but it's always unpredictable. Now, that might sound a little bit askew in terms of a business plan, but I say that because we're at the mercy of the weather, for example. Sandier has already negatively impacted us. And what I mean by that is tournament events were canceled or postponed, you pay double for rescheduling, for example. If, in fact, on the case in point, in this particular tournament, if it snows December first, if you were going to put on a tax, you wouldn't get a dime, because we wouldn't have the event, and we wouldn't be able to use Gillette Stadium. So those are all potential eventual situations. So weather is a, a major concern for us always and annually in three different seasons. So that anticipated money is, is true, that I say it that way, but you never know. Another major part is what we would say pairings. Now, pairings impact potentially the bottom line because of who may participate against another team. For example, if you have a solid community like Foxborough, and their program gets in a postseason tournament, their community is extremely supportive, but they could be planned against a charter school, where there's no community behind them at all. And so you, you only get the benefit of one community in terms of potential revenue. Another challenge is, we have a tremendous thrust in terms of elevating the girls' programs throughout the coun, throughout the state. And for example, to be specific, like, two new programs relatively within the last ten years would be girls' ice hockey, girls' lacrosse. Well, for us, we still go out and get the finest venues for them, as just the same as the boys. In other words, we put the, we put the girls at the Boston Garden for ice hockey, we put the girls at Saugus Arena, or Harvard University, or Saug, or Worcester Centrum, you know, it doesn't matter, they're exactly the same. But with the evolution of those programs and doing equity across the board, we have those, that many more opportunities exist, and consequently, the dollars have to follow. And with respect to girls' sports, they are, they are not generating as much income. Now, that, that isn't meant to be a negative comment, that just means I'm trying to fill in the picture about why we need these kind of dollars. And yes, we get them from a Super Bowl football, or a basketball at the Garden, or ice hockey at the Garden. So we're in the business of promoting participation. We want maximum participation for a maximum number of boys and girls, and we're always trying to build new programs for our kids because we believe so strongly in the benefits of participation, in the opportunities for them to learn life lessons through participation. So it's a, it's, we are out there beating the bushes to find the best venues, clearly to find the best deals, and clearly advocate where we can save a dollar, or in these type of forms, for, for what I shared with you, make a dollar to take care of subsidizing all the others. And it's not only tournaments that we're subsidizing, we're subsidizing all of our student service programs, which have suffered because of state and federal grants that have just totally ceased. So our curriculum, which I shared with you, has not stopped or diminished in terms of what we roll out to our kids in our schools, but at the same time, it's been, you know, really different, difficult in terms of beating the bushes and trying to come up with those dollars that we can earmark for student programs as well. So I'm talking, I'm sorry I'm talking so fast, I just wanted to try to get that out, and I'm more than happy to, you know, get, answer your questions.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Charlie.
You're very welcome.
I'm sorry, Bill.
No.
Where'd Charlie from?
Sandy.
Maybe.
Irene.
Irene, I don't know. All right. Discussion on the board? I know this is, you heard a presentation, there's also the payment in lieu of taxes and tax, and all that stuff, that they're not involved, but it all plays into the request, or at least it did last year. So open up for discussion.
This is the last one in Foxborough. Is that true?
Well, for this contract.
Well, we hope there will be a future, but I will tell you that we've never gone this late without having the, both the overture and something in hand. But we haven't been told that we're walking.
Okay. But right now, on your contract, this is your last one?
Oh, yes, this is the last year of three, or the second three-year contract. That's correct. That's correct.
Just wanted to put that out there for clarification.
Okay.
Okay. Are you planning, if you had your druthers to stay, or you thought Springfield was next on the horizon to get the western part of the state? Is that not correct?
You're partly correct, Mr. Chairman. And that's, this may be the reason why we haven't had the opportunity to get into something. The folks at Gillette are well aware that on October 26th, our membership, our assembly voted on a new football plan, which was markedly different from what we have now. For example, we have 19 Super Bowls now statewide. They're all over the place. We only play six at Gillette. But the vote that actually went in the favor of a change would mean that there are only going to be six Super Bowls next year. The goal is that they are at Gillette Stadium. That was part of the framework and anticipation.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Discussion?
I just, I've always, I've voted for every year that they have come in front of us, and it doesn't really cost the town anything. The folks that do come in go to our local businesses as well, so it, it helps the economy here in Foxborough. And being nonprofit, I think, you know, we should support it. And the crafts give what they give. You know, the stadium has to pass that minimum anyway, so my choice is that I'll, I'll probably support it again this year.
Okay. More discussion?
Well, I, to tell you the truth, I've never thought that a waiver should be given for the Super Bowl. And I mean, I've watched, I've watched the selectmen's meetings, and whenever this has come up, I would be sitting there and going, why? Our revenue that we get from events at the stadium, we get $2.57 per ticket. And we get that because they don't pay real estate taxes. So what that is, is that's revenue to the town. And I've done some calculations in saying, you, 17,000 tickets, that you think, and at $12, which is the children's price, you're making $204,000. And if we charged, if you gave us the $2.57 from the ticket prices, the town would realize And my, my concern is that there is no tailgating. So the craft organization has the concession stands, so they're going to make money in the concession stands. And then also, they are donating the stadium to you, so they're going to do that as a charitable write-off. And also, Foxborough pays $3,000 per year in membership. So if we give you this waiver, the only people who are not getting a benefit, actually, are the good people of Foxborough, the taxpayers of Foxborough. And that's why I, I just don't think a waiver is, is proper for the town of Foxborough to give you.
May I respond to that?
Sure, please.
I think the thing that is very fair, that I, I offer, hopefully for an understanding, is that the Foxborough school and the students benefit greatly. They participate in almost all of our tournaments at no cost. We eliminated all entry fees for all of our tournaments because of other ways to generate revenue, which I've been, I think, pretty clear about, that they come down to three big sports and opportunities. But they cover all the, these eliminations of major dollars. And Foxborough has over 800 students that participate in interscholastic athletics. Besides the tournament experiences, and there are, there are a ton of individual sports that they do participate in annually, the student services they receive are significant in terms of opportunities, extensive workshopping and leadership programs that we provide them. So they are, they are a credible viable member of our association that enjoy all the benefits of one another. And if Foxborough goes, see, we're only talking about six games. We have literally thousands of tournament games a year. Foxborough will go to another venue, and it belongs to another town, or another professional association, or another commercial association, and it doesn't cost them anything. Yes, it might cost them, take a bus, but not, not to participate there. So another town, or another venue is assuming the cost of mitigation. I mean, we use all the professional associations, all the state universities throughout the state, and Foxborough benefits from all of those as well.
But the situation we have with Gillette Stadium, it's different from some other venue that you use. The town receives fees, the user fee goes to the town for our revenue, for our revenue. It's part of our revenue that the town should be, that the town gets. And what you're doing, if we eliminate this fee, we're eliminating $41,990. That's, that's a good amount, that's a good amount of money.
We've been very grateful for that type of support. But I was just responding to the benefits of the Foxborough.
And I understand that. And we also, the member, the town of Foxborough pays a membership fee of $3,000. So we, we pay.
By all means, every town does.
Yeah, I know, I know. But what I'm saying is, I think waiving the fee is putting a burden on the tax, I'm talking about the taxpayers of the town of Foxborough. The deal we have with the stadium is we get $2.57 of every ticket price. And I think we should be getting the $2.57 per ticket.
Let's just keep it to the board, Nick. More board discussion?
Bill, I'm sure you remember that I have voted against this waiver for the past two years. Again, the reasoning being that I think it's approximately $50,000 in real impact to our bottom line, that I think right now, especially given the potential with the move of the soccer tour, you know, soccer out of Gillette to a different venue, that would have a tremendous impact on our revenue stream. So I don't think that, again, this is a year to consider foregoing $50,000 of income. I think we need to be squirreling that money away, quite frankly. I think the other thing is, you know, I agree with Ginny in that this is impacting the taxpayers, you know, in, potentially in other venues. I don't know that other stadium situations where there, these events happen, would have that type of agreement, that a town where that particular venue is, is foregoing tax revenue as part of that situation. If an entity donates the use of their stadium or facility, that's it, unless they have a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with their particular city or, or town. But I think here, again, in the situation, our taxpayers end up subsidizing every other town's participation in addition to what our regular dues are by giving up our revenue. So, again, it's just another reason why I would not support this waiver. I think that, you know, the stadium would be paying, paying this fee to us directly. Is that correct, Kevin?
I'm sorry?
Does the stadium pay the town directly for the $2.47? Maya does not pay the town $2.47.
No, the stadium pays.
Right. So, you know, I, I think that, that's just how we get our income, and I don't think we should change that, so.
So, excuse me, we're actually giving the waiver to the stadium?
Correct. Right. And that's been my objection all along, is that we are waiving a taxpayer's taxes to the town of Foxborough. No one has ever waived mine, or any percentage of mine.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah. Can you hold off? I'd just rather go to the board and.
Sure.
Well, this can be a long debate or a short debate. I mean, we all made our stances over the many years. I think I'm probably 4-0 for, because I was two years minus to me. I can go up and down the hill, yap all night, but it's about the kids. I'm going to stick with my story, and I'm prepared to make a motion as soon as you give me a nod.
I do want to hear from Kevin, but my, my thoughts on it, and, I mean, I spent a lot of time on this last year. I went out to Forge Park, looked in your windows of your building to see if there was a big luxurious decadent place. And I actually spoke to a lot of people at Maya last year. And I agree with Lorraine and Ginny that for every person that goes through that gate, there's money that's owed to the town, call it a pilot program, so you can calculate that. So if you look at it that way, there is money that's left on the table from the town that we're not getting. And granted, you don't get that issue with other towns because they don't have that. But I also look at it that, when I looked at this last year, I looked at what our costs would be as a town. So the police service, if they were called, the fire, and I understand that the Patriots out of their pocket do pay for the police, they pay for the fire, and they pay for 10% on top of that. So there's no cost to the town, other than the, the ticket. You can argue that there's a potential benefit to the town, because we do have the meals tax, which there is money coming to the town when someone buys something at the stadium, or any restaurant in town. When this agreement with the town was put, put together on the ticket prices and the estimation of events and payment in lieu of taxes, they didn't have the turf field. So at the time, there was, I don't think this was an issue before, because I don't think they let anyone play on the grass there, because it was only for the stadium. Now we have the, the football games from the college, we have the additional soccer games, we have the, the Maya and all that concerts, because there is turf. So I think we are taking in more than we anticipated on the payment in lieu of taxes. And hey, it's business, if we can take in more for whatever deal was signed, maybe that comes on, you know, that's a win for, for us on that side. But nonetheless, there is a benefit to that. You know, the craft, you know, when, when people say, you know, no one's giving me a break on my taxes, and I agree, it would be nice to get that. But over the last year, when we had some massive power outages, you know, and there were lights given to us for the use at the intersections, and there were generators, and there were electricians paid for by the craft organization to hook up the generators, you know, we have the option of saying, no, thank you, that's a tax burden that we have to give to the people, or we say, thank you, that, we'll take that, that charity, or we'll take that donation. And we do. So it is, you know, on one side, you can make the legal argument, or you can make the argument that, you know, tickets times $2 is that, and it's owed to us. But at the other side, time, then you got to say, you can't have it both ways. So I think this is, you know, if the craft organization was making a ton of money off it, and, and, you know, but there, there, it's something that for six years, they've asked us, on the sixth year, to say no, and not recognize the benefits that it has to grow that area, which benefits everybody. I've always supported the, the waiver, and I think I will this year. So, now that was the board. Kevin, did you have something to add?
Mr. Chairman, I speak for the Chief Financial Officer, and I'm your Chief Executive Officer. We are, again, opposed to this, and would make that recommendation of the board. I won't belabor the, the complete and complex argument, but I will focus on two points. First, Ginny has correctly identified the central issue. If it were the case that the stadium paid taxes, this request could not come before you. It would be unlawful in the state of Massachusetts because of something in the state constitution called the anti-aid amendment, or the AAA. Council has given you an opinion last year, that very clearly laid that out. Because of the way the stadium was constructed, they do not pay property tax. They make a payment in lieu of taxes, a pilot. This money is, in essence, tax money. It's simply not called that. This is common with organizations. Towns do it with colleges, they do it with all sorts of organizations. But make no mistake, this is not anything other than the people's money. This is money which is paid instead of taxes. And what I add, the total volume of revenue paid from the stadium is a tiny fraction of what the taxes would be if it were assessed according to our normal methodology. So we're already taking a substantial reduction in what the stadium would pay if it were taxed in a normal manner. Now, my comments have no reflection on MIAA. I know there's been conversations in the past about the beautiful place that they have, and I, I will say that these two gentlemen, well, this gentleman has been wonderful and forthcoming. He gave us substantial financial information last year to show exactly where this fits in Maya's funding program, and all sorts of information, and I very much appreciated that because it removed any doubt whatsoever in any of our minds, I think, concerning the, the margins with which MIAA deals in terms of funding its operation. But at the end of the day, it is not any different than any other not-for-profit charity. It is a not-for-profit corporation, which happens to deliver quality services to the youth in Foxborough. But MIAA does not deliver quality service disproportionately to the youth of Foxborough. It doesn't deliver quality services any differently than it does to any other community which is a member of it. As we learned last year, Foxborough alone contributes this 40 to 50. As we learned last year, Foxborough alone contributes this $40,000 to $50,000 annually. No other community in the state of Massachusetts makes a similar contribution, anywhere near that volume. I would feel a lot better, frankly, if this decision were put in front of the voters at a town meeting, which is what would have to happen if this wasn't pilot money. It would have to go to a town meeting. And the taxpayers would have to decide in the meeting if the value received was worth the dollars being requested. Because that is the law and the Commonwealth. That is what the anti-aid amendment requires. And I have been associated with many nonprofit organizations that deliver services to communities, and which ask for money, and which had to come to a town meeting and justify that money in the form of an appropriation, an authorization by the voters, whether or not they would grant that money. We are completely subverting the legal process in this state, only because, and this is my second point, there is a gray area in the nature of the pilot payment. As council said to you last year, when the anti-aid amendment, amendment to the constitution was written, it did not presume pilot payments. It presumed the people's money was taxes. And so the AAA does not clearly identify pilot money as being subject to it. So there's no case law on it, and no plain language. But council calls his letter to you, saying the following. "We consulted with the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, which advises municipalities on matters of state finances. I, town council at the time, spoke with Kathleen Clary, the chief of the Bureau of Municipal Finance Law. As we worked through the issue, she agreed that we identified all the relevant issues and in our analysis, as set forth above, is correct. In short, there is no legal precedent for or against either position, no court cases. The arguments and against the applicability of the AAA is outlined above are reasonable, and she could not predict which way a court would rule if one were to decide the issue. However, because it is not certain, the conservative position to take would be to not grant the waiver. You have granted that waiver for five successive years. The taxpayers of Foxborough have now contributed somewhere between $200,000 and $250,000 to the support of this charitable organization. To grant it again means the contribution from the taxpayers of Foxborough will approach the $300,000 mark. I suggest to the board that this is not an appropriate request to make, and it is certainly not an appropriate request to grant. And if this is challenged in a court by a ten taxpayer suit, I believe MIAA will owe the citizens of Foxborough a great sum of money. And I urge you, in the strongest possible terms, to please deny this request."
Thank you.
Right, okay. Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Ginny.
No, I just have a question for Mr. Gaines. So this means that no matter whether we grant you the waiver or don't grant you the waiver, with my figure that it came with $204,000, you're gonna keep all the, all the revenue from the tickets? You, MIAA? Because you're not, it's not, we're not giving you, MIAA, the waiver on the, on the fee. We're giving the craft organization.
We can't, because you're a third party.
Right, so it doesn't make any difference. You're still, for 17,000 tickets, times $12, $204,000. You're gonna keep $204,000. You get all the money from the ticket revenue. Right? So, so, so our not granting the waiver is not gonna diminish what you make on the, on the tournament. You're still, ticket sales, you're gonna, you're gonna receive all the money from the ticket sales. So if we don't grant you, if, if the waiver is not granted, it doesn't make a difference. You're not gonna lose any money. But the town of Foxborough's gonna lose, lose money. The town of Foxborough's gonna lose revenue, tax revenue.
In the practical world, we, we certainly are gonna lose money. We have a partnership with the crafts, and the intent, by all means, is that we have, it's necessary because of the relationship that they have with you, that, that this is a, an expectation for every ticket, no matter what type of an event. So we certainly have to honor everything. But, but what's on the table is that we, our event, that they allow us to have, can be exempt from that. I mean, it, it's so disproportionate. I mean, there's not a ticket sold at Gillette Stadium, ever, for any event, that's anywhere near $12,000. So, so the same $2.47, that's 25% of, of, is taken from the ticket. You know, some tickets, their tickets, go up to $250 for concerts or anything like that, so. But, but it's, it's the event, and it's what they do for us. They would never be sending us all, all the money. They would be, the way they do their business, I, I would be assured that they just send a check based upon the taxation, like they do for every ticket. And I think you already mentioned that, Kevin.
All right. So your contract, your contract, excuse me, one more thing. Your contract with, with Gillette Stadium, it's in the contract that you made with Gillette Stadium that you would apply for this waiver, so that the stadium doesn't have to pay the $2.47 per ticket that's being sold?
Oh, but I think that's...
But, but why would a contract, I mean, how can...
They're not contract.
Well, how can, well, you've had to have, you must have, you said it was a third-year contract. Why is that fair to the town that a contract that you have with Gillette Stadium deprives tax revenue for the town of Foxborough? I mean, I, I was going in this thinking that we were gonna deduct $41,990 from your $204,000. But that's not the case. All that money is gonna go for the children. So you're not gonna lose any revenue, but the town of Foxborough is gonna lose revenue if we grant you this waiver. And that's been going on for six years.
Well, we don't...
And I don't, you know, I mean, this is, I thought the waiver was granted to you. The fact that the waiver is granted to the stadium is even more outrageous.
Well, it has to be granted to the stadium, because they're a third party. You can't do it in a legal way.
It doesn't make any difference, Mark. It doesn't make any difference. What it means is, the town of Foxborough is not receiving pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes, which is what the, what the deal is.
Everybody has realized that, everybody has an opinion, and the opinions have all been stated. To, to, to reinstate them and reinstate them, it's just gonna go on for hours. Everybody's got their opinion.
And as far as, I mean, the, the legal letters, we've, you know, we, there's been people that have flip-flopped on those, presented both different sides, depending on the year. And it is a gray area. If you say, you know, there's no legal precedence and there's no predictability, we've been down that road before.
It's not a gray area if the two, if, if the $2.47 would be paid directly from the stadium. It, that's not a gray area. Any event, the ticket price, the town of Foxborough is supposed to get $2.47.
Understood, understood.
We're not, we're not, if, if we don't grant this waiver, MIAA is not gonna be out money. They aren't gonna be out money. You are gonna receive all the money that you get for ticket sales. Right?
There's gonna be that much money less?
Why? Not from you. You're not, you're not gonna give us the, you're, you're not gonna pay the $2.47 per ticket, because it comes from the stadium.
I think what would happen was, the, the craft organization is donating the services, donating the stadium, and they would donate, they would pay that on their behalf. So at the end of the day, you're getting the same amount of revenue. If we don't grant the waiver, you still get the same amount of revenue. The craft organization would pay that 17 times two.
Right, and then they can also deduct anything they give to charitable organizations, they can de-tax.
I think, I understand that.
So to me, the only ones who's not benefiting, the only people who are, are losing are the taxpayers of the town of Foxborough.
Any more discussion?
Just, um...
Say something?
No.
All right, good.
Uh, Randy.
No, go ahead, Linda.
No, go ahead. It doesn't even matter. I just, opinions, that's all.
All right.
Can I just ask a question? I'll go, I'll go up there.
All right, Randy had his hand first, so let Randy speak, and then you can go.
I saw Kevin spoke for Randy earlier. Question him again. He said he did.
I spoke for our recommendation. Thank you. I, I just wanted to clarify a couple of points, just as it relates to the anti-aid amendment. The Board of Directors for Maya, is it comprised of members of public schools and private schools?
Yes.
So if you read the anti-aid amendment, then it is, it is very clear that the, the, the operating authority of an entity that is claiming this sort of charity from public dollars, and even though it's not taxation, it is a general fund receipt, if it is not wholly, the language is wholly, publicly controlled, and with private schools having participation on this board, it is not wholly publicly controlled, and therefore, in my opinion, based on former town council's opinion, I believe this is an illegal, in my opinion, an illegal granting of a waiver. That aside, the second point is, just sort of a general or practical point. If, if I had a son who was playing in a high school Super Bowl at Gillette Stadium, and I was being asked to pay, the number's $2.55 extra on my ticket, I wasn't, wouldn't hesitate at all. I would pay 100 times that number to see my son play in a high school Super Bowl at Gillette Stadium. So I think we're not talking about what's coming out of anybody's pocket, other than the people, the friends, the parents and the friends and the family of these children that are playing in this very important event. And I don't think any of them would think twice about paying an extra $2.55 to see that, that child play in that game.
Thank you.
Can I go now, or? Can I go before you do?
My question, I'll, I'll pose it to you privately.
I guess, I just...
No, you can pose it to me publicly.
Sure, I will.
I just, um, my only statement is, is, you know, here we go again, you know? And, and, and my problem is, is that I understand the frustrations with everybody, but I, what I, I'm just, I would like to see us move on and possibly mend some fences. It's nothing that we haven't done already for the past five years. It's the last year that we're doing it. It does bring, you know, as I mentioned, it does bring things into the town, to the other businesses within the town. I'm not taking something out of someone's pocket. Yes, Lorraine, you know, the, the soccer could go out of town, but they have committed to us that $1.1 million every year, regardless. And, and again, maybe we should start keeping better track of what some of our businesses do do for us, not just the craft organization, but some leeway. If we can afford to do that, I think we should, and so, that's all, just. I'm getting very frustrated at this point.
I understand, but I think, you know, everyone does charitable things, and it's, I don't think that's really the issue. I think the issue is much smaller. It is a tax issue. And that's what I'm focusing on, and, you know, again, if Maya is going to be able to recognize the revenue that they expect from that, you know, I, that's gonna happen. I think we should be looking at keeping our contribution in line with the rest of the state. No one else in the state contributes $50,000 a year to Maya.
No one else in the state has a stadium in their town either.
There's only 32 of them in the whole country. We can keep going with this all night. I mean, I'm gonna say it, all right? Let's learn to count votes, people. You got three stated there for it, you got two stated they're not. You got some other people in the room that don't have a say at this table, we're all publicly elected. Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we waive the 2012 Maya Football Super Bowl at Gillette Stadium fee. Sorry, I'm gonna recapture that. But they would grant the request, the town uses fee waiver for the 2012 MIAA Football School at Gillette Stadium.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
The last.
Motion carries three, three to zero.
I've had enough of this debate.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if we have a ten minute...
Well, good luck at any event.
I know it's running late, but it's been two and a half hours.
Frank, can you put a message on there? We'll be back in, in 10 minutes.
Now, there's three Franks.
Hold on, I only signed a couple of them.
You got the majority.
I only signed a couple of them. Okay, let me know. Thank you for a short, short recess after that spirited debate. A couple of things left on the agenda. Before we get into the town meeting warrant article, Frank Spillane, do you wanna come up? And you've been here the whole night to talk about your action item?
I think the letter says it all, you know, the council, the national...
Okay. All right, if we could...
We've got a question to both, which question?
Yep, so why don't we do that way here, if that's what you were waiting for? There's an item on the action items. It is the fourth item down. A request to continue the public hearing for, from November 20th, which is next Tuesday, to a future date regarding the liquor violations at Waxy O'Connor's. Waxy O'Connor's was one of the three. We had three last week. We're gonna do three on the 20th, plus the one that didn't come with an attorney. So we got four scheduled to take this off the agenda to a different date.
To January 8th, it looks like? In the letter?
Yep, on that letter.
Yeah.
So the, the manager has a conflict, but he's available on January 8th? All right, in discussion with the board? Motion on this action item?
I just, I mean, my only thought was, maybe you should come up, Frank.
So the public can hear him.
Yeah. We're going pretty far out to January for this hearing. I was just wondering if there's any way you could...
We could do it sooner. I put that in the letter out there in front with Kevin. That was his recommendation. But, you know, any continuance, if you wanna do it in December, that's fine.
The reason Frank and I talked about this is, the potential on this one, due to the seriousness of prior violations, is, is for a lengthy hearing. I would say two, three, four hours, not out of the realm of possibility. Looking at your agendas between now and the special town meeting, you just don't have that block of time. Unless, you know, we're gonna have a special meeting on a different night, or endure the possibility of an extremely late meeting, which I think everybody agrees, we don't do good decision-making after 10 o'clock. So in chatting with Frank about it, and then after December 11th, he got one more meeting, and then the holidays. So going until after the first of the year seemed eminently logical. I talked to Attorney Cass, his special counsel, today. He concurred, made complete sense, so that's why we recommend that.
Is there any law that makes us have a hearing at a certain amount of time?
No.
And there's nothing in the file that they've requested extended hours for New Year's or early...
We don't have a request like that yet, nope. And under the circumstances, I doubt that they'll ask.
Okay. And they, they didn't make one before for early opening for Patriots games? Do you know?
I, I was gonna check that today, and I forgot.
I thought they were in front of us before.
I don't think so.
I don't think they did. I don't have that in mind.
Frank, is there a possibility that Waxies will be sold before January 8th?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so the request to extend the hearing from the 20th to January?
At, um, do you know what time it was for? Okay, I would suggest the board, because you have to go to a date and time certain, I'd suggest you go to 7:30, because that gives you time to get through other, what may be... may be more urgent matters, and still have time for what could be a lengthy hearing.
All right, do you have, entertain a motion?
Motion to continue the hearing from November 20th, 2012 to January 8th, at 7:30, 2013, for Waxies Mass LLC regarding the alleged liquor license violation.
Okay, motion made, seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Mark. Further discussion? Just on a quick discussion, was this already in the paper to be advertised for next week? It was already in the published?
To...
For the hearing for next week?
Yes, that's already in advertising.
So we have to have open hearing?
Yep, you have to open a hearing.
20th, and then extended.
And then continue it. What you're doing right now is you're letting us know for scheduling purposes, you're okay with that. You're letting Frank know, so he can schedule his business, schedule his clients, so we know that's coming, which is going to make life a lot simpler than if you decided it that night.
That time, yeah. Okay, motion made, seconded.
However, we've got a fourth hearing that night now, too, so.
Yep.
I just had a question. You said you don't think there's a possibility it could be sold. Say it did, what would happen to, would everything be moot?
If it were to be sold?
Yeah, would the violations be moot?
No, because you have to transfer, you have to approve the new owner, so you can hold a hearing before you approve a new owner. However, the board could equally decide, since there's new people involved, that you're not going to have the hearing. It's really up to the licensing authority. I mean...
And it does happen.
Right. You still have the requirement to open the hearing on the 8th. So if you had a request for new owner, for transfer of ownership, you can't act on that until you act on the hearing. So you'd have to do that. But obviously, if you have that request pending, then you might make a different decision on the hearing. That's all going to be in front of you. Well, if it sells, it would be in front of you. We don't know that.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Diana?
Thank you, Frank.
Okay, back on the regular items, special town meeting warrant review. And in your packet is, I think it's the same warrant that we approved to go over to the advisory committee on October 30th?
Yes, that was the final one.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, the board doesn't need to take a lot of time tonight. All we want to do tonight is have you take a position on the ones that are sort of obvious, because some of these you actually have the legal obligation on to favor, and others you've already voted on. And so sort of go through them quickly, identify those, take motions on the ones that you can, and then identify for me which ones you want people to come in and speak to you on, and have a little more involved discussion, so I can get that all scheduled over the next couple of meetings, because we only have two before the town meeting, so it's kind of critical.
So I'll just touch on the articles quick, and if there's any questions. Article one is the fire contract. We have that contract yet?
You have signed it, and so this is the one you've already signed that we're funding. You're required under 150E to take a position of recommendation. So that covers Article one and three. Those are the two contracts that have already been signed, but they weren't, those are the two that, you recall, were pending the night of town meeting, and we declined to try to rush them.
Back in May, yep.
So they're back on now. Two is not yet done, so there wouldn't be any position appropriate on two. But one and three, you have to take a position of approval or recommendation.
All right, so let's just circle the ones that we're, we'll go back to them. So one and three is ready. Article four was the unpaid bill. That was the water bill regarding Mansfield. So that has potential. Article five was the town hall plans. I think that we're going to hold off on that one?
We already voted on that.
You already voted that. You can decide if you want to discuss it or what, but you already voted to put it on and to recommend it.
But this is for building, demolishing this...
This is just for, this is just for plans. This is the preparation of plans for a new building.
Okay, but it, but is, the plans for the new building? For the new building.
Assumes demolition of this one, yes.
So I think, you know, we did vote for that, you're right. It's on the agenda for the advisory committee, and some of us have been going to there, so I'm going to go as well. If it gets to the point where the advisory committee says there's big issues, we can always bring it back and revisit it.
Right.
And I think, you know, I plan on going tomorrow night, too. It just seems like we're all showing up at some of these meetings, and maybe we should post that. I know it's not 48 hours, but...
You can't debate with them, that's all.
We don't sit together.
Well, I just publicly want to state that, you know.
Yeah, remember, you can appear at a meeting, and you can speak personally, but you can't confer amongst yourselves.
And I think we've been careful about that.
Spread out. It's just like, you know, naturally I've gotten a call because I get calls a lot, and, you know, open meeting law and everything else, so.
Article six is the turf field, if we hold off on that as well. We haven't voted on that. Article seven, municipal employee organ donor?
Yeah, that's the law that allows, we actually had a school employee do that this past year, which sort of brought the issue up. And there's a statute that allows the town to give any employee who donates an organ 30 days off without impacting their vacation, a sick time, or whatever, so that they can recover from the donation. And it was suggested to me, frankly, I don't remember who, I dropped it in a folder for town meeting and just put it on when it came up. Looked up to you, I don't...
You guys feel like you have enough information?
Probably see it happen two times in our lifetimes, if that, you know.
Article eight is the water and sewer employees. That's the legislation to, we've already combined the DPW in practice, and now we're codifying it on the paperwork with the Attorney General. You guys feel like you have enough information tonight on that one?
Yeah.
Article nine is the disability commission?
This is striking the ad hoc committee and replacing it with a formal commission. Duties and responsibilities are virtually identical, but this is now a statutory commission, because the other one really had no legal basis to it. It was just an ad hoc committee appointed by, that you were authorized to appoint by town meeting. This gives a formal authority under the law, but it's still just an advisory commission.
Article 10, I'm sorry, are you guys comfortable with, you all, everybody comfortable with Article nine? Y'all?
Y'all.
Article 10 is the tier one assessment. That's for the 21 Market Street. That's behind the fire station. We talked about that last week. Article 11, it's zoning, and I think this is one of the ones that were, was taken away from the May meeting. We ran out of people for the quorum.
Yeah.
This is the one that prohibits use variances.
Am I correct on that? That was the planning board?
Yes.
Okay, so that is right. And Article 12 is the floodplain overlay. Again, that was on the May warrant, and we ran out of people, mass rush. Article 13 is the municipal affordable house trust, and that is regarding 40Bs, and if you can't build it, money comes into it. So I think we did sign that already? We did not vote on it yet.
No.
Make a motion that the board recommend Articles one, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12.
Whoa, wait a minute.
It's basically everything.
Before we get down that road, is there any article that anyone wants to pull out that we have discussion, so we're not lumping it all together?
We pulled out two.
The ones that we had circled, Article one and three, four, five, seven, eight, nine through 12, and 13.
I didn't get any debate on those, that's why I was going to make the motion, but...
Right. And it's not really a debate, it's just a clarification that if we hear more facts, which we will, when we go to AdCom, do, could we come back and revisit?
I think I'd encourage that.
Because this is what happens a lot, is, you know, we get up to the podium, and I know I voted for something, but then, once I've, you know, they've done their homework, and I get more educated on it, I sit there and go, no, I'm not voting for it. Then, you know, one of us might say to me, like, hey, you voted for that. And, you know, I just want to make sure that we can motion to reconsider.
I'd certainly entertain that. I don't want to, especially if there's new information or information we weren't privy to, to be stuck on a vote just because we're stuck on it.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, go ahead, Mark, I'm sorry.
So the motion is for...
Articles one, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13, for the board to support.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So just to be clear, Article 12, which is the police contract?
Two.
I'm sorry, Article two. Article six is the turf field, which I can speak to if anyone wants to hear it. We can kill that one tonight. Kidding me, those are the only two.
Yeah.
Police contract, no brainer, it's not done, but it could be ready, and then we would vote to support, we will, we would, once we sign it, we'd vote to support it, I think. And the turf field, Mr. Chairman, if, I would take over, Chairman, for two seconds, because I know you want to recuse yourself. If the board like to have a debate on that tonight, we can take a stand on it now, we can do it another time.
Another time.
Excuse me?
Another time.
Another time?
Yeah, I'd kind of like to wait.
So we'll discuss Article six at the next Forrest-Luckner meeting?
You'll have to.
Yes, yes. But it gives us time, because I know AdCom's going to be talking about that. I think that's the big sticker, is that one and the town hall.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll ask the school committee to come in and present as well, as their warrant article.
All right.
Good.
All right, moving along. Get back to you, James.
And we also have an item, actually, we have one executive session to negotiation with non-union personnel.
And litigation.
We have action.
We have action items.
With litigation?
It's not on there. Please add it. I need to give you an update. Remember, once you're in a meeting, you can add executive session subjects, as long as you've got executive session on the agenda.
Yep.
You guys okay with adding negotiation to the agenda?
That's fine.
Action items?
Yes, sir.
Interoffice, we have the October 16th meeting minutes?
I'm looking at you, all right.
Ball set.
Approve the minutes of October 16th. Second?
Motion made, seconded. Discussion on page six, which is the last page with writing on it. Third paragraph down says the motion carried forward 1-0. Usually when we have somebody that's by themselves voting either yes, no, or abstaining, you just put the person's name. I just don't remember who the one person was. Anyone remember? This was the change health insurance benefits and the mass...
They have voted against it.
So just...
That's actually a good call. We're required by law to list that. The case was unanimous, fine. If not, we get to list it.
So, I know this is probably out of order or whatever, but have you had the meetings with those folks from the insurance advisory?
No, we're still putting, the information we have to put together is gigantic, so we're wading through, trying to put it together. Hoping to meet with them, not going to be before Thanksgiving at this point, be after Thanksgiving, but it'll be soon.
Well, I'm just, the more information that I was reading about it, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'd like to be able to go to that meeting, because I'd like to get more educated on it.
They are late afternoons, because it's employees, and so...
Well, if it's late afternoon, yeah. That's better for them, obviously, because they said, the 10 o'clock, they couldn't make it.
It's after the teachers get out, because the teacher rep who's chairing, unless they change it, I don't think, get here till 2:30, 3:00, something like that.
Yeah, that makes sense. It's just, I think that there's, there's things to be learned and better understood. So when we made that motion, that approves, I just want to get this straight in my head, because I was rereading it, and that approves what the legislation...
It approves the process to go forward, for us to begin having the discussion with the union about what the changes will be, and what will be the dispensation of the savings. And if they want to make an alternative proposal, they can do that. That comes back to you. Basically gets the process moving.
All right. So they, so they, the unions could come back. It's almost like a negotiation with the unions, or it isn't?
Well, it's not really a negotiation, because you have, you have the unilateral authority to impose it. But that doesn't mean that they can't counter-propose something and will be happy to listen to them.
Okay.
Okay, and I need to stop that now, because it's not on the agenda.
Talk to me after, if you want. Linda?
Just let me know when that meeting's going to be.
Yeah, sure.
All right, action item two, Kathy Brady from the J.C. She was actually here early at 7:00, and she had another meeting, and I don't think it was worth staying around three hours, because it's a request to decorate the common.
Very important. It's very important. I move that we approve the J.C.'s to decorate the common.
On December 1st.
On December 1st, in her other winter holiday season.
Second?
Motion made, seconded. Further discussion? Just that we're very grateful for her and the J.C.'s to do that. All those in favor? Five, zero. Next item, the new hacky license application for Barry Craigman and Jason Lees. Both are signed by the police chief?
Both are signed by Deputy Chief and Chairman.
On his behalf.
And they were both for, once, they're both new, so I think we should do it separately. I move the approval of the new hacky license for Barry Craigman.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion, can we hear a motion on the second one?
And I move to approve the new hacky license for Jason Lees for two years.
Second?
Motion made. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five, zero. Item four, we did, James Toronto, for the Toby Keith's Bar and Grill, is a request for 11:00 a.m. opening on Patriots home games for Sunday, the 11th, 18th, 16th, and 30th.
But isn't the game on the 18th scheduled to 4:00?
Yeah, the 11th is done, the 18th moved to 4:00. The 16th is at 8:20 p.m. and not at 1:00. So the only really relevant game is December 30th.
Well, we can just clarify as a motion, we want it to, 1:00 starts, right? That's how we always do it. So, motion to grant opening at 11:00 a.m. for Toby Keith's Bar and Grill during Patriots' Day, Patriots' home games, starting at 1:00 p.m.
Okay, I'm going to, we'll take that motion. Before you second it, there's a two-part request on this. One is for 11:00 a.m. openings, and then the second paragraph is also for an extension till 2:00 a.m.
Right.
So if your motion is just for that...
Just for that, not Patriots.
I would do them separately.
Okay, that's what I'm reminding you. Okay. So motion is made for just the December 30th, for the 11:00 a.m. game?
Second?
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor? Second part of the same letter says, also, we would like to request an extension to December 31st liquor license. This is not a request to serve alcohol to a later time, but only to remain open until 2:00 a.m.
So I just wanted to make sure that that means that those drinks will be off the bar at 12:45, correct? Or 12:30?
No.
Okay.
No, under your current regulation, drinks will be off the bar at 1:55 a.m. Moreover, you have a hearing pending here, as I think you're aware, right?
Yeah.
So I would certainly urge the board to not take action on this request until you have the hearing on the alleged violation next week.
Shelf it.
Otherwise, you're potentially acting in an inconsistent manner, given a prior hearing and decision you made last week, and...
That just proves you're awake.
Toby Keith is one of the three.
Yes, yeah.
I don't know why I missed that, because I'm not so sure that I would even give him the 30th, because that might have...
I apologize, but I know there's three. There's four next week. One is the restaurant that didn't come with counsel.
Right.
What are the other three again?
Waxies.
Waxies, the Blue Fin, I think it's called.
Right, and CBS Scene.
CBS Scene. So Toby's is not one of them.
Toby's not one.
I'm sorry. What did I just say?
Yeah.
It's CBS Scene, because last week it was...
Blue Fin.
It was, it's live showcase live. So it's Blue Fin, CBS Scene, Waxies. That's it. So this is not one of them.
Wait a minute, you might be right. Hold on that. Let me, let me go check, because this isn't something I want to...
Well, it's something we can hold off on anyways.
Well, but if there isn't a hearing pending, then there wouldn't be any reason to hold off.
It's an action item. Nothing, nothing even, it's a month away.
But they need to make their plans. And if I misspoke...
They need to be able to publicize it.
If I misspoke, I want to correct that immediately.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Could you check on that?
I didn't, I didn't see that anywhere.
I'm positive it's not Toby Keith, but let's go through it.
Go to Robert, Rob, Robert.
All right, hold off on that one. The next action item is...
Jeff Packard Charitable Fund, the auctioneer's license.
Mm-hmm.
I move to approve for the benefit to be held on, well...
November 16th.
November 16th.
Huh, 16th.
It's Friday.
Yeah, that's it.
What are you talking about? Item six?
Item six.
Yeah, it's a one-day auctioneer's license, that's all they ask him for.
Just for clarity, this, this application was on October 31st. I guess, well, yeah, I'm thinking it's the NSO November, so this is early as it can get to us. So it's tight, but...
Yeah, I just kinda thought it was kinda...
It's this weekend, so...
Yeah.
Came in on the 31st.
You wanna continue your motion or no?
No, that's it, it's, it's for, you know, it is for that day, it's for the 16th, it's just...
Second?
You know, it came in on the 31st of October. We've been meeting almost every day, I feel like I've seen you guys almost every day, I don't know, maybe not, but...
Motion made, seconded, further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries five zero.
Mr. Chairman? I misspoke, and my apologies to the board and to Toby Keith. There is no hearing pending at that establishment. And in point of fact, during the compliance checks, they did fine. So there is no reason for the board to take any action other than approve this, if you wish or not.
So can you explain to me, if they're not going to be serving alcohol?
Last call at 1:30, drinks off the table at 1:55, that would be your regulation.
It's extension...
So they are going to be serving alcohol after their allotted time at... Because usually, they stop serving alcohol at 12:30, correct?
12:35.
They stop serving at 12:30, drinks off the table five minutes before closing, that's your regulation.
Right.
So if you let them stay open till 2:00?
Yeah.
Where ordinarily, drinks would stop being served at 12:30?
Yeah.
And drinks off the table at 12:55?
Yeah.
It would just advance everything by an hour.
But they're saying that they aren't gonna serve alcohol, that they were only going to be open.
This is not a request to serve alcohol to a later time, but only to remain open until 2:00 a.m.
So, that's what I'm saying, so all the drinks basically will still be off at the table at 5 minutes to 1:00.
No, it'd be...
I, I think you have to clarify that, because under the statute, if you allow them to open, I think that right comes with it to serve alcohol, maybe if you don't limit it...
I know what we've done, yes.
Right, so I think if your intent is, if their request is to not serve alcohol past 1:00, 12:55, or actually 12:30?
Right.
With drinks off the table at 12:55, I think that should be in the motion. That they're open till 2:00, but drink service concludes at 12:30, drinks off the table at 12:55.
That's sort of what they said.
That way, there's no lack of clarity.
That's what they said in their letter, right?
The motion I would make is to allow Toby Keith to remain open to 2:00 a.m. on New Year's Eve.
But not extend their liquor license by an hour.
But to keep, not extend their liquor license operation hours, so liquor, all liquor off the tables at 11:00, I'm sorry, 12:55?
A.m.
A.m.
Second?
Motion made and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Jim Morrison, Jim Morris, director.
Wow, and now we...
Wow, this is a blast from the past.
Dude!
Jimmy Morris, Jim Morris, director of the Wampanoag Roadrunners. This is their annual...
They've been doing this right along.
18th anniversary, yeah.
Mr. Thrasher, I'd love to make a motion.
There you go. Go ahead, Mark. Light open, I'm not gonna go there.
Good. Grant to request to hold an annual 3.1-mile road race in Foxborough on Sunday, February 17th, 2013, by the Wampanoag Roadrunners.
Second?
Motion made and seconded, under discussion, it was, it was signed by Chief O'Leary and Chief Hatfield as well.
My only thing is, is that, you know, these road races are getting more and more, you know, and it's great, because we have great roads for them, but when we're gonna close down a road for an extended period of time, we need to make sure that it's published, and the residents are very clear on that, because there comes a time when you, you know, you can't get there from here, if you know what I mean, and it doesn't matter how you try to come out it, you can't get to your home.
Yeah.
Not you, Marky, but some of us folks that live...
You'd see the bicyclists that go by my house, I can't get out of my driveway.
Yeah, so...
This guy's right back at Linda's house, that's why she's in there.
My suggestion to the board is to include in your motion, no road closings.
I said that, and no road closings.
I thought I heard you say that.
Yeah, and that was discussed, but if the police...
By the way, about three months ago, you publicly promised that on all future road races, so... Just a reminder to the board, because it was a very emotional issue, you know, we worked hard on it, and we determined that we could do that. It takes a little more work and a few more details to do it, because of crossings, but that's up to the race organizers to figure that out. And having it where people can't get out of their driveways for two or three hours at a time, that's just... I do a lot of road races, and I don't, never seen that happen anywhere, ever.
And I understand that, and I agree, but playing devil's advocate, there's an injury, and the police say, well, we wanted to close it, but we couldn't close it.
They have the authority to do that.
Yeah.
They have the absolute authority, public safety authority.
So...
They didn't mention another date in case they're snowed out, so it means that they won't have the race?
You can, yeah, you can approve both dates.